Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for Monday, September 8th, 2025. I will first await a motion to leave the non-public session and to close the minutes, the meeting minutes of the non-public.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kelly, will you please take the roll?
Yes. Mayor McCackren?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Councillor Tabor?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
Here.
Councillor Denton?
Here.
Councillor Blaylock?
Present.
Councillor Bagley?
Here.
Councillor Moreau?
Here.
Councillor Lombardi?
Here.
Thank you. Kelly, will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We start out, we have two proclamations. First, for FTD Awareness Week in Portsmouth, whereas Portsmouth is home to individuals living with frontotemporal degeneration, FTD, and its debilitating impact on themselves, their families, and those in the community of caregivers who surround them. And whereas FTD is an underdiagnosed neurodegenerative disease that affects more than 60,000 people in the United States. FTD affects as ages as young as 21 and as old as 80, with the largest percent of affected being under 65. And whereas FTD can impact behavior, decision-making, personality, language, and/or movement, and reduce life expectancy to just a dozen or fewer years with no known treatments to slow the progress of this disease. And whereas those with variants of FTD such as primary supranuclear palsy PSP experience disruptions to balance, speech, and fine motor abilities are more at risk of falling and find such simple activities as dressing, eating, and expressing their thoughts increasingly difficult. And whereas there is little known about the causes of FTD and there is no treatment or cure for PSP, although several hopeful clinical studies of drug interventions are now underway thanks to the National Institute of Health Funding. Now, therefore, I, Dago McCackren, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City of Council and the citizens of Portsmouth, do declare the week of September 21st to the 28th, 2025, as FTD Awareness Week in Portsmouth, and call upon the community to learn more about FTD at the AFTD.org and to support advocacy of the Association for Frontotemporal Generation who seek to change the course of a disease that is largely misunderstood, misdiagnosed, and underfunded, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 8th day of September, 2025. Do we have anybody? I don't believe so to accept this, but we will send that on the way. And next, we have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas the National Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration reminds us that we must all work together in seeking strength, dignity, hope, and purpose. And whereas we know that suicide is preventable, although it is complex and influenced by many interconnected factors, hope and resilience grow when people feel heard, especially in their darkest moments. A simple check-in, conversation, shared story, or helpful resource can make someone feel less alone. And whereas preventing suicide means combining knowledge, care, and compassion, understanding the risk, knowing the warning signs, accessing supportive care, and sharing hope to help people heal, build resilience, and thrive after crisis. And whereas locally tailored efforts are some of the best and most effective ways to address unique community needs, small group conversations with peers and professionals that focus on dignity, hope, and purpose can help create a sense of connectedness and belonging. Those with lived experience can help reduce stigma and foster a sense of unity around the challenges of mental health and suicide. And whereas making resources accessible and visible in the community is crucial so that those in need of support can easily find care. When someone is having suicidal thoughts, connection, thorough planning, and dedicated follow-up care create a vital structure of safety and support. And whereas suicide prevention isn't just about one moment, it is about a continued care over time because ongoing support builds trust, long-term healing, and recovery. Working together on a safety plan gives people a sense of control and hope. Now, therefore, I, Dago McCackren, hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and remind all members of the community that there are steps that we all must take in looking out for our loved ones, the people in our community, and those that have been impacted by this leading cause of death, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 8th day, September, 2025. Thank you, everyone, for listening to those proclamations and for those organizations that have reached out asking us to make those proclamations. Next, we have the acceptance of minutes for July 14th, 2025.
Your Honor, I move to approve and accept the minutes for the July 14th, 2025, City Council meeting. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Recognition and Volunteer Committee Report. We have the Public Art Review Committee Recommendation, the proposed gift of original artwork in honor of Vernis Jackson.
We have Park Chair Kristi Weyer here, Your Honor. Good evening. Kristi Weyer, 600 Broad Street. And you have this in your packet, but we thought it would be good for you to also see it because it's kind of hard to photograph. This is a donation, and we're asking for your approval, a recommendation from the Public Art Committee, an artwork that's donated in honor of Vernis Jackson. And, you know, I know you all know Vernis's work because you've, you, over the last year, honored her as well. Vernis was really a supreme educator, not only of young children, but also of adults, of really all of us, through her work with the Seacoast African Cultural Center, as well as her work on the Bering Ground. So if you approve the donation, we would recommend that it go to the school board for their acceptance as well. The middle school has indicated an interest in having this artwork for exhibit. It would be appropriate because Vernis often, even though she was an elementary school teacher, she worked with the middle school often to have their artwork exhibited at SAC. And middle school students, as some of you remember, were very involved in creating work for the Bering Ground. The work is an original piece. It's acrylic on a specially-treated canvas. It's designed to be displayed as a textile, not necessarily to be framed. What it is, is the text of WED Boys excerpts from that with Toni Morrison's face painted on it. It's one of a series of originals that depicted Black Americans who played key roles in the struggle for human rights. The artist is from France, Romeo Mivikhanen, and he is really known for his experiments with different materials and different approaches. So this, as you can see, it's made to look like parchment. It's been repeatedly kind of put in an elixir to make it look like that. While we recommend that the school department define the location, in the memo, we've said it probably should be at a height that isn't casually disturbed. And we would recommend, you know, signage, obviously, that notes that it's in honor of Vernis. Vernis did get to see it before she died, shortly before she died, and was really thrilled by it because Toni Morrison was her favorite, a favorite author. So it's a recommendation from Park, and I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Ms. Weyer? Thank you very much for the recommendation, and again, for the recommendation of the school board.
And can I mention two other things related to Park? That quite a while ago, you all approved the Fairy House sculpture, which will be on display during, at Strawberry Bank Visitor Center, the couple of days during the Fairy House tour, two weekends from now. So that's one thing to see. And in July, you approved the next sculpture for Bohanko Park. We've launched the fundraising for that and have started receiving some fundraising. So just to say publicly, for anybody who's interested in knowing more about that, you can learn about that through the Park Committee.
Thank you very much, Kristi. Councillor Cook?
And I echo the thanks to Chair Weyer for bringing forward this beautiful piece of art for us to consider tonight. So, Your Honor, I would move that we refer this piece of artwork to the school board for placement at the middle school and for a report back to the city council on the status of that.
Your Honor, I second that.
Any further discussion? Councillor Blaylock?
I think Vernis Jackson is certainly, a pleasure to have her honored as a piece of artwork in the schools. I think that's very appropriate, and I hope the school board approves this.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you again, Chair Weyer, and for bringing this forward, and hopefully, I am sure the school board will find a place of prominence. Next up, public comment. We have here, but not more that we can't have three minutes each. First up is Irene Bartholomew? Is that correct? All right, on resurfacing of Gate Street.
Resurfacing of Gate Street. In the past, when it's been resurfaced, it's been repaved. This year, they tried something new in the city, and it's a, it's a material, I don't really know how to describe, but it's kind of a soft, very soft version of paving material. I personally think it was a sloppy job, so I went out with my paint scraper and scraped some of it off of my granite curb and my lovely old granite stone steps at 90 Gate Street. And in the, what it's called, the pathway stop, which is a curb, but it's level with the street. It's dropped down in that as well. Then I noticed there were, like, there's a big seam, and there's lumps on everybody else's driveway or pathway stop along the, along the street. Since then, you can see where, when tires turn, there are little swirls. So it's not a very stable, strong material. On warmer days, it's easier to make these swirls when you turn your car wheels. It's half, one of the drain pipes, one of my neighbor's drain pipes is actually half-covered with this quasi, this soft paving material. It's, I've heard from a former neighbor who lives in Springfield, Vermont, that when they put this material down on their streets, that it came up with snowplowing and was gone within a year after leaving all the broken pieces everywhere. So I don't know that there's a solution other than to wait until it crumbles and falls apart and is, but I would suggest that we stop using that treatment on our streets. And I guess Peter Rice would be the person that would be able to come up with a solution, if there is one. That's it.
Thank you very much, Irene. You've nailed it. Next up, Sarah Cornell on ICE activity.
Hello. My name is Sarah Cornell, and I am a Portsmouth resident. I'm here to contribute to the city council's, quote, "effort to further accountability, transparency, and due process across level of, levels of government," as stated in its resolution to recognize the due process rights of all its residents, which you passed unanimously on August 4th. Since August 5th, ICE agents have moved over 400 people through Pease International Airport. Men, women, and some who were most likely adolescents, based on their size, have been transported through Portsmouth from Vermont, Massachusetts, Maine, and other parts of New Hampshire. They are driven here in vans, 43 vans total since August 5th. The vans are met by Pease Development Authority staff who give their IDs a cursory check, and they are ushered into a waiting area inside the gates, the vans. The people then exit the vans and have shackles applied to their wrists and ankles. Then they board the waiting plane. Port City Air, the sole fixed-based operator at Pease, provides support for these flights. It is completely normal for a fixed base operators to provide hangar space, fueling, flight planning, and passenger services. In this case, staff also assist by carrying the shackles that will restrain the detainees. In some cases, the flights are originating from Youngstown, or the flights originating from Youngstown, Ohio, and Alexandria, Louisiana, already have detainees onboard. There have been 12 flights so far, three per week. These flights continue on to destinations such as Chicago, back to Alexandria, Louisiana, sometimes Richmond, Virginia, Harlingen, Texas, and Jacksonville, Florida. As I said, more than 400 people have been transported through Pease since August 5th. This is the size of a Portsmouth high school graduating class. Have you sat in the music hall balcony recently? That seats 379. More than 400 people have been moved, removed from their homes, families, and neighbors and moved through our home. They have been moved through your jurisdiction. I make this report to you today because of Portsmouth's commitment to history. I know that my spoken words and the letter I sent you earlier today will be entered into the permanent record of our city. In the future, people will study what Portsmouth did in this era, and this, this is what Portsmouth is doing in this era. We are watching hundreds of people be trafficked through our city each and every month. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is David Holt on constitutional rights.
Thank you. David Holt, I'm actually from Somersworth, but I would hope that if you folks went to Somersworth, that the police would treat you the same way.
Oh, sorry, David. I, can, you gotta go to the end, I'm sorry, because we have Portsmouth doesn't speak first, so you'll have the last word. But just hold on a second. Next up is Nancy Clayberg on ordinance change.
Good evening. I hope you're all enjoying this beautiful fall weather. I would like to request that you consider the proposal adopted by both the Police Commission and the School Board regarding Chapter 1, Section 1.106G, relative to responsibilities of the Information Technology Department. And I would like to read the proposal, I think you have it, but I'm not sure everyone out in television land has it. The School Board and the Police Commission jointly oppose changing the administrative code to give Human Resources and Negotiation Department, the Information Technology Department, and the Finance Department veto power over functions unique to each of the chartered departments. We believe that no evidence has been presented that a problem, that a problem or problems exist that merit this dramatic change in a practice that has worked collaboratively for years. We believe that coordination of functions common to the chartered departments and the city departments can be managed well through mutually agreed upon standard operation protocols, or MOUs, Memoranda of Understanding. As mentioned in the text, we believe that cooperation and collaboration has been very successful in the past. Two examples that I recall from the school perspective, for several years, the School Board had an MOU with the City Recreation Department, where the director, many of you knew and loved, Russ Wilson, also performed the duties as the Athletic Director at Portsmouth High School. Also, for years, the School Department had an MOU agreement with the city regarding legal tasks. I am sure there have been many more. The School Department has had great success in working responsibly and well with the city for many, many years. Please consider maintaining this way, like it has been for many years. Thank you for your time. And if I could just ask, my vice chair, Brian French, is here, and he got here too late to sign the paper, will he be allowed to speak? Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Nancy, or Chair Clayberg. Next up is Esther Kennedy on Portsmouth. I guess, I think that says.
Good evening, Esther Kennedy, 41 Pick Green Ave. I come before you tonight because I'm saddened. We elected a school board. We elected a police commission. The citizens elected a fire commission. And now this council, the nine of you, are thinking of taking power away from those commissions and that board. I truly believe you're going against RSAs, and I truly believe that we have forgotten the history of why they were put in place. The police commission was put in place The Police Commission was put in place in 1895 because our city was so corrupt. The governor and the council decided to put a law in to make Portsmouth have a commission. We have RSAs for our School Boards that are decided and dictated by the State School Board Association, and our State School Board. They're very clear that they have their individual powers, they have their individual responsibilities. I am not sure what the power grab's all about. Maybe it's the city management or the council, but there's a reason for the power grab? Please be clear and tell us. If they've done something wrong that's objectable to the voters, please let us know. But they have not done anything from what anyone has said to want this power grab. Again, in 1895, we had corruption. I hope today we are not doing it for that reason. I hope today you guys give a rationale of why you are taking all this, have a need to take this power from the boards that we've elected as citizens, because they were elected just like you. We voted them in just like you. We asked them to follow the rules and the laws of the land just like you. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up is Buzz Shure on the ordinance change.
This is Buzz Shure, 390 Greenleaf Avenue, Portsmouth. I apologize for bringing my computer up here, but I recently had a birthday last Saturday, so the brain isn't working quite as well as it used to, given my advanced age. I know some have already talked about the proposed ordinance change relating to Human Resources Department, the Information Technology Department, the Finance Department. That's what I want to speak about. I know others are also going to speak after this, so I'll try and focus this as much as possible on, on the language that I have particular problems with. In Section F and Section G of the proposed ordinance change to the administrative code, this language is eliminated. The charter departments, that is Fire, School, and Police, shall retain those human resource functions which by law or practice are unique and specific to the particular charter departments. That's eliminated. Under G, the language that says, "All departments shall comply with these standards," that's new language, "including," and then eliminated, "the charter departments, except that the charter departments shall retain those information technology functions which by law or practice are unique and specific to the particular charter department." There's, if that language is being eliminated, it is taking away what has been delegated by the charter to the charter departments. And there is, so that's, it's that particular language that I object to. I don't think there's any explanation that I heard at the Governance Committee meeting that I attended and objected to this kind of language. There's been any justification for that broad an elimination of language. I understand that there is desire to have some continuity amongst, in terms of human resources and information technology, but it doesn't need to eliminate that language as the joint resolution, joint agreement from the School Board and the Police Commission said. That can be worked out through SOPs and through MOUs. That has always been worked out in the past between the Police Commission, the School Board, and the city departments. And there's no, there's been no evidence that problems have occurred that merit the elimination of this broad language. I think what it feels like, intended or otherwise, is a, if it's broke, let's, if it ain't broke, let's fix it type of approach here, and I think the language is too broad.
Commissioner Ker, Shure, you do have the ability to speak at public comment as well.
Excuse me?
The public hearing, this is also under the public hearing, so.
We have no public.
Okay, sorry.
I would have spoken then, but we don't have that authority under, under the way the agenda reads.
Got it. Next up is Klein is from Northampton, Petra, on admin code changes, why?
Petra Huda, Portsmouth. I'm going to speak on the same thing, and I'm going to totally agree with the statements that were made by Mr. Shure and the Chair of the School Board. So I'm trying to understand, as everybody else is, why these changes are going through when they are not in compliance with the Charter. 3.9, the first five words, your admin code in the preamble, read your, read down in your preamble, it says the same thing, except for the charter departments and the RSAs that govern school, 189, police, 105. So we've gone through, what, six months of this? We've spoken, the School Board has come in front of you, the, all of the members of the commissions have come in front of you, the superintendent has come in front of you and say they don't agree. For the chairs of the police and the school commissions to have to write a memo to the City Council to change this, this sets a precedent. Are you listening? So the next thing I'd like to say is, I think you need to look at the city manager, the last, the authority of the city manager, number, Section 1107, number B. It states in RSA, number 29P39. Number 29 is city treasurer and county taxes. This is the wrong number. Please fix it, it should be 21-P39. And as far as the rest of it goes, it would be super if you didn't put all of our volunteers through all of this for six months for something they don't understand, as was just stated. And I urge you not to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next up is Chair Coyle of the Police Commission on ordinance change.
Good evening. Kate Coyle, 660 Middle Street. I'm also here speaking in opposition of the IT ordinance change. Obviously, as Chair Claiborne stated, we had provided a statement in our, in opposition, and I would highlight this as a solution in search of a problem. As Chair Claiborne articulated, we have had a history of working with the city IT, working in collaboration, in cooperation, and now what's coming forward are these changes that, one, I think there's some significant legal, there's some problems with the legal authority to make these charter changes, and I have done some of the legal research, and it concerns me. I think there is, there's been some assertions, sort of uncited, as I understand, at authority to proceed in this way, but I don't think there is the authority of the City Council to make these charter changes. That's, casting that aside, let's talk about the fundamental nature of why the Police Department in particular, because that's what I'm here, I'm here representing as Chair of the Police Commission, about what the needs are of the Police Department that are not going to be met in this overarching scheme specifically, and, and why we have the Police Commission in part because we're better equipped and better able to understand and handle and, and understand the specific needs of the Police Department. And I'm talking about CEGIS compliance, and I'm talking about running the new CAT RMS system, and all these very specific needs of a Police Department that will not, or will be compromised within this singular system. There's a lot of discrete issues that IT manager with the Police Department have to take on, on a daily basis, and I think that if the objective here is a cost effective, is some cost efficacy, that is, that is not going to be the case. The reality is that no matter what, the Police Department needs their own, they need their own IT specialists because the needs are so discrete and so specific. There are all these regulatory requirements that they have to comply with. And my concern is with this ordinance change that it will compromise safety and security for our communities. So I implore you to not make these charter changes. Please listen to the, the commissions here, everybody who's come before you and say, hey, we know our, we know our departments, and we're asking you to not make these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Coyle. Next up is Paige Trace on Portsmouth.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Paige Trace, and I'm still in Portsmouth. Daglin, thank you very much for giving me credit towards Islington Street, but when is Fleet Street going to happen? That's just as important. The fact of the matter is that as long as there are CSOs, very seriously going into South Mill Pond, however occasional, you are in violation of the Clean Water Act. That's not something to screw around with. Now, that's all I have to say about that because you're busy, all of you, nine of you, being excited about a new children's playground down by South Mill Pond, a toxic, dead pond, because you still have CSOs flowing into it. What are you going to tell the mothers of those children when they go to pick their kids up out of the water and the city is still saying, please don't swim in that pond? Please, stop kicking the can down the road, all of you, with South Mill Pond, and create a city environment that will cease the CSOs from flowing into South Mill Pond. You know, I sat there this afternoon and I sort of wondered, what has this council done that we've elected for the last four years? And I'm sure many of you can come up with very valid, vital things that you've done. You've changed a verb for an adverb and created new legislature. Some of you have created playgrounds, some of you have tried to charge the Little League for using their play, play areas unsuccessfully, hopefully. Now we're working on police, fire, and school. This is where I personally, as a past City Councilor, draw the line on, it's common sense. Leave the three areas of health, safety, and education alone. Can you not do that? Or are you all going to sit there and look at Daglin and go, yes, I passed the ordinance? Yes, I passed the administrative ordinance? Please, for once, take a stand and leave us residents with at least some form of fire and city and educational departments. Please, leave them alone. Let them do their work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up, Bert will wait, because you're from Newcastle, Carrie. Carrie Nolte, School Board Member, Nolte, on Chapter 1 Amendment.
Carrie Nolte, Port, Denet Street, Portsmouth. I am trying to just reiterate all of the other comments. I just want to point out that, you know, I, while I've only served on the School Board for four years, I think this is pretty unprecedented that you have two elected bodies signing on to a statement to gather in opposition to these changes. And I hope that even though we've gotten to third reading, there is no public hearing, we're here at public comment to bend your ear yet again. I hope that you will understand that this is from deep concern, that it comes from a place of asking too many questions that don't have answers or are easily dismissed. It may be that things can function and our students can be educated in a timely manner and receive the information technology that they need in the moment, but more and more, as this conversation has grown, our concerns about that have been dismissed. I'm particularly concerned with some of the council members' description of the city manager serving as a CEO and of the city and the school being under that. Based on New Hampshire RSA and all of the School Board authority, even though we have one SAU in Portsmouth, we still must function as a SAU in compliance with state law, and these changes related to our human resources and information technology, I do believe are violations of that. It may be everyone, I think if we want to think it's going to all work out and we're all going to be able to work together, great. Why isn't that done through MOUs as we have traditionally done? Why is that coming into this administrative code in such a heavy-handed way in order to make this change? We feel it's unnecessary and it's creating more problems than, than the council anticipates, but also just, you know, frustration with the lack of respect for these opinions being voiced by other elected members, and it's come to this moment that we all have to come and interrupt public comment in order to encourage you to not pass this third reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. Next up, Zach McLaughlin, Superintendent, on ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I apologize to be at the podium due to the, the lack of a public hearing, which I, I don't think is, there's nothing wrong with that, I understand your process. There's not an opportunity to speak then, so I want to make sure I chimed in now. The issue is, this issue is about governance as much as, as it is about technology. Under New Hampshire law, under our own city charter, the Portsmouth School Board, and not the City Council or City Manager, holds the powers of supervision of budgeting, staffing, and operation of our schools. Those powers include decisions about the technology we use in classrooms, special education, curriculum, and staff evaluation. The city's proposed ordinance language would place school technology under the city's Information Technology Department. While well-intentioned, and I believe it is, this risks eroding the authority of the School Board and our charter, that our charter explicitly protects. If adopted as written, the ordinance would create conflicting lines of authority. Teachers and principals answer to the superintendent and the School Board, not the CIO or the city manager. We all need to agree, we all agree on the need for strong cybersecurity. The School Board welcomes the expertise of a cybersecurity analyst. That's an area where shared resources makes sense. But there's a clear difference between supporting school IT staff on security and directing or approving school IT-based decisions. So I urge the council to adopt language that does two things. One, ensures the city CIO can set cybersecurity standards across all departments. And two, reaffirms that educational IT decisions, curriculum tools, student data systems, classroom platforms, remain under the authority of the School Board. That approach honors the law, respects our charter, and still strengthens the city's cyber defenses. It lets the city and the School Department be true partners without crossing the governance line voters put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Next is Brian French of Portsmouth, School Board Member, on the ordinance.
Sorry, I'm bringing up my laptop because I don't, I can't remember what I wrote, but. Thank you, Your Honor, and my name is Brian French, I live at 255 FW Hartford Drive. Served on the School Board for eight years now, and last two as the Vice Chair. I'd like to thank the City Councilors for all they do for the city and appreciate the countless hours you put into making this city great. You have in your packet, and I did look at it, a joint statement from the School Board and Police Commission opposing the changes to the administrative code that grant veto power for HR, IT, Finance Departments over the Charter Department functions. power for HR, IT, finance departments over the charter department functions. School board specifically opposes the ordinance describing CIO authority, and at the very least, we ask it be sent back to committee with direct, um, input from the charter departments. For me, the core issue is simple. The amendment creates a fundamental conflict in our charter. The proposed language grants the CIO authority over cybersecurity, system resilience, and operational efficiency for all departments. Phrase "operational efficiency" really is the problem. Section 6 dot 3 of our, uh, city charter states, "All money appropriated in the annual budget for the support of our schools shall be subject to the control of the school board, which shall have line item authority over its own budget." The charter is clear, the school board controls its expenditures. Yet this amendment would allow the CIO to override the school board decisions under operational efficiency. Let me give you an example, and this might never, ever happen, uh, but let's suppose it's a tough budget year. And suppose teachers reporting, um, are reporting aging Chromebooks, can't run modern programs. And the school board votes to maintain a four-year refresh cycle, allocate, using our allocated funds. But in a tough budget year, the CIO could veto that decision, stretching the replacements out to six years in the name of operational efficiency. As an administrator, um, this would be an example of administrator without educational expertise who would override school board's chartered authority. This is especially concerning with special education, with federal funds obligations under IDAA, ADA, um, requiring specific assistive technologies chosen for their effectiveness in learning and legal compliance, not just operational efficiency. For years of, uh, what's the problem? For years, the city has voted on our budget while the skid, school board has maintained line item authority. This balance has worked, and the school department and IT department have worked collaboratively and successfully in the past. In closing, once we begin chipping away at our charter departments, um, at our independence through administrative amendments, where does this end? Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Um, now we'll go back to those folks, um, not, uh, or non-residents. First, we have David Holt.
Sorry, I wish I'd been able to go after Sarah because it kind of follows in the same theme in two ways, when it's protecting our civil rights, our, uh, constitutional rights, et cetera. And secondly, it, she reminded me that you folks had passed a resolution recently, uh, supporting our due process, which as Sarah had said, is being, uh, taken away from some of the people within the country. Um, the reason I'm here today is because my free speech was trampled, um, by one of those that's sworn to protect us, Officer Blaine Johnson. One of the Portsmouth police officers has twisted council policy 2009-05 into something it wasn't, never meant to be. To be fair, he's not the first, because there've been multiple ones that have done this. Um, basically, this is, uh, in order to impose his personal beliefs and limit the free speech of peaceful protesters looking to save our democracy from the fascist and authoritarian takeover that's taking place right now. The resolution is pretty simple. It recognizes Market Square as a public forum where speech gatherings and signs are constitutionally protected. The only limit is that people can't block pedestrian and vehicle travel, which we were not doing. It says nothing at all about requiring citizens to hold every item in their hands, which is what we have been told by police over and over again. Um, while this was used once several years ago to stop fanatics, uh, that were filling the square with empty chairs with flags and signs and banners attached to them, which was blocking, uh, traffic, that's again, not what we were doing. Uh, we were not. And we also had three neat bags of extra signs for people that wanted to join us, and that was called littering. Um, but that's just yet another thing. Um, again, each time that we've had different police officers come up and try to impede our free speech, they tell us a different story about what this resolution says. But they only do it to us. Whenever the MAGA, uh, insurrectionists, white supremacists, et cetera, are in the square, they, uh, basically get overlooked. In fact, uh, five years ago, I was saying that they filled the square with, with chairs. Last year, they tried to do it again, and I reached out to the mayor, the deputy mayor, the police. Only the deputy mayor got back to me and told me that, basically, this wasn't a police issue. Now, I don't know what the backstory is to that, if that's what the police told her or what it was, but it was only the, uh, ordinance enforcement was supposed to handle this. However, when I tried to explain that to Officer Johnson, he, he ignored me, refused to listen. Police officers are supposed to be civil servants, they're supposed to be serving the public. They're not supposed to be using their positions to enforce their own ideology, which is what he was doing. This has gone on and on for years. Groups like Occupy New Hampshire Seacoast and New Hampshire Peace Action have all been told that they're supposed to hold everything in their hands. I have the, the resolution here, unless there's another one, but I searched and couldn't find anything else that, that even came close to talking about it, and this one doesn't say anything to that extent. So I'm hoping that you will actually, um, make an effort to try to train, uh, your officers and make sure that their ideology is not supporting fascists and white supremacists. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, uh, we have Klein Dickens from Northampton on ICE.
Hi, I'm Klein Dickens, Northampton, born and raised Portsmouth. Um, a lot of what I'm saying will be similar to what Sarah said. Um, I think we're getting our information from similar sources. But I got into contact with some local organizers who have been confronting and documenting the people disappearing our neighbors at P's. And tonight, I'm honored that they have allowed me to share some of their work. Councilors, on August 4th, you all passed a solemn resolution to protect residents' due process rights. Mayor McKeon, you gave a rousing speech on what sets America apart from Nazi Germany, the value of knowing our place in history, and the importance of the rule of law. You even received a standing ovation. Since that rousing speech and solemn resolution, you all have allowed about 400 people to be disappeared from P's and sent to concentration camps in Louisiana, Florida, and Texas. That amount of people is, for reference, about two-fifths the student body of PHS, disappeared in about a month. On August 16th, organizers at P's spoke with an officer of the Portsmouth Police Department in plain view of masked abductors and their vans of trafficked people. He said he was assigned to, quote, "make sure that no one starts any fights." When asked to verify the badges of those masked abductors, he refused. When asked to verify the immigration status of the people being abducted, he refused. Neither the Portsmouth police nor organizers ever found out the immigration status of the 46 people who were disappeared that day. They were trafficked from P's to Florida and likely to the Everglades Detention Center known as Alligator Alcatraz. On August 19th, organizers witnessed children shackled and loaded onto planes. That day, 35 people were disappeared from P's. On September 2nd, organizers were able to speak with abductees trapped in vans waiting to enter P's. They did not know where they were, who was trafficking them, or where they were being taken. They yelled out the phone numbers of their loved ones and lawyers. They begged organizers to tell their wives where they were going. Organizers did manage to contact their lawyers and loved ones, who in every case did not know they had even been moved. Had organizers not been on the scene, they would have simply disappeared. 29 people were trafficked from P's that day. Mayors and city councils across this country have met this moment of crisis with courage. They have physically stood by their neighbors, affirmed their commitments to sanctuary city policies, and used the full extent of their power to shield families, children, neighbors, and friends and loved ones from attack. Councilors, you have failed to meet this moment. Since passing an empty resolution on August 4th, you have failed to protect shackled women and children from being flown to camps. You have failed to track down disappeared family members. Your police have protected masked agents abducting our neighbors, and your police commissioners, the very people charged with oversight of the police, have chided the public for being so foolish as to expect basic accountability for their actions. You are complicit in an ethnic cleansing, and until you do something about it, shame on you.
Thank you, Klein. Next is Bert Cohen of Newcastle on free speech.
Some of you may know Bert Cohen, recovering politician. But I'm, I'm here loving Portsmouth. It's just an incredible town, and our history of being a city of the open door is a proud, proud history. And what's been talked about here, and I haven't been before this council in a long, long time, um, since my hair was dark, um, but, uh, freedom, it is about freedom. And my, my dad grew up, uh, well, he was born in 1914, so he grew up in the period of fascist Germany and always told me to have high sensitivity to any kind of police state, be really sensitive to it. Portsmouth is the city of the open door, and it means that, and I think it's a proud history. I'm really concerned, as other people are, about police having selective enforcement, perhaps, downtown. It's important for patriots to speak out against this fascist dictator, wannabe, this bully up there, who is sending police everywhere and threatening, making war on America. And the fact that Port City Air is participating in this and helping to ship, uh, good people, people we, people we don't know, we're supposed to care about people we don't know. Uh, and it's really, I'm just concerned that Portsmouth maintain its dignity and its great history in keeping and protecting freedom of speech, having police be absolutely just protecting, you know, serving the law and serving all the people and be restrained from serving any particular political interest. And of course, I'm concerned about, uh, and I'd like to see the flights out of P's kidnapping people stop immediately, if it possibly can. I don't know what the various authorities are, but, uh, pressure and hearing from people does matter. Hey, I made it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Don't see any hands on Zoom. Thank you all for public comment. Um, next up, we have the public hearing and vote on ordinance and/or resolutions. First reading of ordinance, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 10 zoning ordinance, uh, Article 5A, character-based zoning, Section 10.5A 43-45, special building footprint provisions, Section 10.5A 43.46, redevelopment of existing buildings, and Article 15 definitions building footprint.
Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the September 24th, 2025 city council meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Buehler?
No, I just say I think this goes along with what the municipal building committee's been working on, um, and that we're looking at the whole building and not just the police station and being as efficient and maximizing.
That's the, that's.
I'm sorry, yeah, this is just on the, uh, the footprint and. Okay. The size between. Um, and we'll have to report back at the second hearing on how many defects. Counselor Mora.
I, just, just to briefly say, this is about the fact that how we created our building footprint calculation in the zoning ordinance, we were really looking at new buildings and we're trying to now exempt some existing building footprints, and that's what this is actually about.
All in favor? Any opposed? Next is, uh, public hearing, public hearing and adoption of resolution, public hearing and adoption of resolution amending number 6 dash 2022, adopted April 4th, 2022, which authorized a bond issue and/or notes for costs related to the feasibility and design of a new police facility and/or rehabilitation of the existing facility to include costs for the entire municipal complex. First, we have a presentation by Nathan Lenny, and then, uh, council questions before the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor, councillors, city manager. I just want to take a brief moment, I don't have any slides to share with you, but wanted to remind you that on August 4th of 2022, the council, uh, authorized borrowing of $1.4 million, but it referenced only a new police facility and/or, uh, and/or renovations to that same space. We have in June of '23 issued $200,000 of that in bonds, in June of '24, $300,000, and in June of '25, another $400,000. Of that amount that has been bonded, we have expended $451,696.58, if you like. Uh, and as we contemplate the remaining amount of money, bond council has advised that it's appropriate that we amend the purpose of the entire authorization so as to be clear that any of the dollars that are included under that initial authorization are agreeable to be spent not only on renovation of the police facility or, or, or construction of a new facility, but also on the municipal complex, which is now the focus of the entire project. So it really is simply clarifying that your original authorization granted in, uh, 2022 is now amended to include with any of those $1.4 million still left to be spent, uh, all of the municipal complex that might be addressed by the work that you're now doing. Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Um, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clarify for anybody who is here today that this does not increase the allocation at all.
No, it does not. There are still $500,000 not yet issued in bonds that are included in this resolution.
Thank you.
Counselor Begley.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Um, a question, the previously issued monies, were any of those used to come up with the 70-plus million dollar proposals?
Listening for, listening for Andrew Pergel to tell me. I believe, yes, this goes back to '22, so it, uh, these are the dollars that have provided all of the ongoing work of the selection committee, uh, leading you through that process to today.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the council before we have public hearing? Opening up the public hearing, seeing no questions at the moment, public hearing speakers too far against the reclassification of the existing bond to account for the municipal Seeing none, closing the public hearing. Any additional council questions or deliberations?
Your Honor.
Counselor Dayber.
Um, I think I would just say, in support of this, that the municipal building committee has met numerous times, and it gets clearer and clearer as we work through, um, the options, that the most efficient way we're ever going to get a good police station, uh, and improve the defects in this building, such as the HVAC systems, is to look at it holistically. And I think we're making good progress on that. We've, we've contracted JSA as our architecture firm. By the end of the year, they're going to come up with three options for us to fit a new police station, uh, and a renovated, uh, city hall, all into the same footprint with perhaps some small additions. And I think that this bonding change allows us to continue that work.
Counselor Buehler.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, no, I'm happy to support the work that the, um, municipal building committee's been working on. Um, I think this helps them get to that goal that we've all been trying to work for. Um, I'm glad we're not kicking the can of the police station down the road, but we are doing it as efficiently, and we're doing it right. We're not, we're not rushing it, we're doing it right. Uh, but I think this allows that to happen. Um, so I'll just move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I believe we need a roll call vote for the two-thirds voting. Is that correct?
We do. Um, and so, uh, I'll make two, uh, quick comments. One, um, I am, I am happy, um, that the, the committee is making progress and that the, um, initial estimates of $70 million that were brought down to $40 million are continuing to see that, working within this building, a room that we're actually in that is used, that's heated all the time, that's cooled all the time, but is only used, well, hopefully for three hours on Monday nights, but sometimes it'll go a little bit longer than that. But there's a lot of space within the, the city hall that's not being used, um, as efficiently as we could be using it. One. Two, in terms of process, and this has been brought up, um, a number of times by concerned residents that we will be taking bonds and using it from one, uh, thing that we, we, we go about and get the bond for and then divert those funds to something else. This is something that bond council, uh, noted, uh, that we actually needed to go back and reissue or clarify this language. And so, for those that, that believe that we're taking bonds and we're moving them one way or the other, this should give some confidence, um, that we do have to follow very specific rules when it comes to the, uh, raising of bonds, the spending of bonds, issuing of bonds, and that there are many people that are overlooking that. The fact that we have to change this, uh, language to encompass the entire municipal complex and not just the police station is something that. and not just the police station is something that is an opportunity to learn from. As we all, the bonds are incredibly complex, but I'm happy that this is brought forth here today. With that, Kelly will have a roll call vote.
Yes, Mayor. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylaw?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
No.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you, Kelly. Next up, we have a public hearing and second reading of ordinance of, public hearing and second reading of Chapter 10 zoning ordinance, City of Portsmouth zoning map be amended as follows. Rezone parcels described on the city tax map 138 lot 62 and tax map 138 lot 63 from character District 5, CD5, to character District 4, CD4, to change the boundary of the North End Incentive Overlay District NEOD by removing the city tax map 138 lot 60-2, tax map 138 lot 62, tax map 125 lot 16, tax map 138 lot 63, and a portion of tax map 138 lot 60-3, and to amend the boundary of the Downtown Overlay District by removing tax map lot 138, tax map 138 lot 60, a portion of tax map lot 38 lot 60-1, tax map 138 lot 60-2, tax map lot 38 lot, tax map 138 lot 60-3, tax map 138 lot 60, did I mess up there?
You're on 61.
61. Tax map 138 lot 62, tax map 138 lot 63, tax map 164 lot 4, tax map 125 lot 17-1, and a portion of tax map 125 lot 16 and tax map 125 lot 17 from the DOD, and to add a building height standard of two to three stories, 40 feet, along Rock Street to the cul-de-sac at Foundry Place for the city tax map 138 lot 63, tax map 138 lot 60-2, and tax map 138 lot 60-3. The zoning maps to be amended are referenced in the city zoning ordinance at Chapter 10, Article 4, Zoning and District Use Regulations, Section 10.421, District Location and Boundaries, Section 10.421.10, and Chapter 10, Article 5A, Character-Based Zoning, Section 10.5A 21.10. Content of Regulation Plan, map 10.5A 21A, Character Districts and Civic Districts, and map 10.5A 21B, Building Height Standards collectively, the zoning maps.
Your Honor, I'm going to recuse from this.
Do we have a presentation?
We do. It's a brief one, Your Honor. We have Peter Stith. Welcome, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors.
Hey, Peter.
So we've seen this at least two times before. I'm just going to go through the proposed changes that were voted on in August to move to this public hearing. And the first map deals with the North End Incentive Overlay District. This, what's on the screen, shows the existing boundary. And what was proposed before was a slight adjustment. And if you go to the next slide, this is a, the change will pull it back from Hanover Street and Hill Street to align with the center line of Foundry Place. And then, so all those properties to the south, the east, will be removed, and it will just move and now go along the center line of Foundry Place. And in the Incentive Overlay District, that allows for additional height and building footprint in exchange for community space and workforce housing. So this will remove that ability for those lots to take advantage of that incentive. And again, it'll just make it on the other side of Foundry Place, which really is just the city parking garage and lots that are already developed. If you go to the next slide, the Downtown Overlay District, again, this extends to... It currently extends down Hill Street and Hanover Street, which encompasses the property at 361 Hanover, and then goes down Rock Street and along behind Rock Street to that property. It includes all these parcels. And if you go to what is proposed, it is going to, is proposed to be pulled back, on the next slide, all the way to align with the existing boundary that will then cut through a portion of map 125 lot 16 and then a portion of map 125 lot 17. So all these properties will be removed from the Downtown Overlay. And in the Downtown Overlay, you have to have commercial uses on the ground floor, and non-residential uses do not have a parking requirement. So these properties will now be allowed to have residential on the ground floor, but they will also have to provide parking for all uses on those properties. Along the frontage here, these, this area of these lots will be allowed to have, or be required to have, commercial on the ground floor, but they could have residential on the ground floor in the back. So that was the reason for aligning it along the frontage of these properties along Bridge Street. Next slide looks at building height. In the prior iterations, there were proposed changes along Hill Street. The only change now will be adding, as you can see, the existing building height does not connect from Hanover to Rock Street. The building height along Hill Street is proposed to remain the same at two to four stories and 50 feet. So the only change to the building height map, if you go to the next map, will be to connect Hanover Street to the Rock Street roundabout there. So make that connection for the green, which is two to three stories. That's the only change for building height proposed. And then finally, the next map will look at zoning. This is the existing zoning for this area. It's currently all CD5. The subject properties that are proposed to be changed are 89 Foundry and 361 Hanover, and they're proposed to go from CD5 to CD4 completely with, in prior versions, there were split zoning for this property. Now it's proposed to just be CD4. And the next slide will show the use comparisons between CD5 and CD4 for the dimensional requirements. The uses in these districts are the same. So really, the only change, you know, you can see the differences in what's required for footprint in CD5. You can have a 20,000-square-foot footprint. Now that drops down 5,000 feet to 15,000. There's a slightly more increase in open space requirement in CD4, and also less building coverage required. So those are the summaries of the changes that are before you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions at this moment or later.
Thank you, Peter. Any Counselor Lombardi?
It appears that there is a, in the change of the Downtown Overlay District, does that change affect a specific building and cut it in half?
An existing building?
Yes. That's the, I forget the number of it, but...
The plumbing shop?
Yeah.
Yes, it would go through part of that building currently. And it would cut through part of where the hotel was just built at 165 Deer Street, which is known as Lot 3.
Okay, so isn't that confusing to have a building cut in half between?
I think the idea is that if that property is redeveloped, then the frontage of that would have to have commercial on the ground floor, but it would allow the back of it to have residential on the ground floor.
Okay. All right, I see. Thank you.
Counselor Denton?
Thank you. To follow up on that, when you say it would allow to have residential on the ground floor in the back, it could still have commercial?
It could still have commercial, but it wouldn't be required.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing on this zoning change? No more questions. We'll open the public hearing. Too far against?
Thanks, Peter.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brad Gray. I live at 579 Sagamore Avenue, Unit 100. I'm an owner at 126th Bridge Street or map 125 lot 16 or informally called the Ferguson Building. You know, we have generations of our family are seated behind me. You know our longstanding history of residents and property ownership in the city, so I won't belabor that. However, while we appreciate the council coming to the logical agreement about maintaining our CD5 status with their vote on August 18th, we have to wholeheartedly object to any changes to the boundary overlays on our property. We have worked hard to maintain the ownership of this property. We feel without a doubt that we are in the downtown district of Portsmouth, hence the development of the Foundry Municipal Garage, which was built to help support the increasing downtown population. This structure is directly behind our property, and we might add, we sold a portion of our land to help support the finalization of this project. As you're aware, we have no intention of developing this property at this time. But should this ever be considered, we want nothing more than to maintain the character of the community, which our family has strongly supported and will continue to support. However, we find this latest proposal to be illogical and unfair, an unfair, illogical and unfair attempt to control our investment, knowing that the same scrutiny was not given to the property surrounding us. This proposed Downtown Overlay District, which goes directly through our property, that is quite something. It's confusing at best. Poses questions like exactly how much and what specific portion of our property is to be rezoned? Is it just to force a developer to put commercial on the front of the building? How much commercial space are we talking? What if any restrictions are made, are there to parking? What is the benefit to the city? As the mayor told the council on July 14th, he feels zoning should always be kept simple, and this is not simple. At the same meeting, he proposed eliminating 126th Bridge Street from all changes. We agree with the mayor. This would be the simplest and most logical solution. We look forward to answering your questions above, and we do thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Any other speakers too far against?
Waldwick, Parker Street. I'm here to ask you to vote for this zoning change tonight, not because it's perfect, but actually because it's not perfect. You will never get agreement between what the neighborhood wants and what people who have vested interests in maintaining the value of their specific lot want. And there's always going to be tension between what is best for the city versus what is best for individuals. And I leave it up to you to think about that tonight. I'm here because I know that something is better than nothing. What is being proposed tonight is miniscule compared to what was supposed to go through in 2019 and 2020, and that honestly, the city dropped the ball on. It was none of you on council during that time, so my anger is not directed at you specifically. But this was supposed to happen, and we're coming up on six years ago that it was supposed to happen, and it didn't happen. And the easy thing tonight is going to be to punt it and say, let's wait till the master plan. And I know that the master plan has started. We're starting to gather feedback. There's going to be redouts of it. But by the time that is really done realistically, that's going to be about two to three years from now. And at that point in time, we're going to be coming up on a decade that our neighborhood was supposed to be rezoned because it was acknowledged that the zoning of CD5 next to historic GRC Colonials was not correct zoning. It is coming up on a long time that our neighborhood has owed this. So like I said, I don't think the zoning is perfect. Do I think CD, even CD4 next to quiet, like 250-year-old Colonials is perfect? Absolutely not. But is it better than CD5? Yes, it is. Do I think the Downtown Overlay District going all the way back to Rock Street Park makes any sense, a quiet park where people take their children to go push them in the swings? No, I don't think that makes any sense to have it go down that far. Why does it make sense that it does this weird little jog into our neighborhood but doesn't touch other parts of Islington? If we're going to start expanding the boundaries of downtown, let's have it be equitable of where it's expanding and growing outwards across the city uniformly and not just into our neighborhood. I think the CD4 is a good compromise in that it allows people to still do commercial and pulling up the downtown zone, the downtown zoning. You can still do commercial. No one is taking away your requirement to do commercial. If anything, we have seen developers come and propose that they have to have the commercial waived because they can't get financing otherwise because it's on an economically viable project to have commercial, given how much commercial is struggling in Portsmouth. So it actually feels a bit like a gift to not be required to do commercial on your first floor. Saves you a trip at a minimum to the ZVA to get a variance for it. So, but what I'm really asking for is transition between the neighborhoods. CD4 is still a very dense, is still very dense, allowing some of the buildings on Bridge Street to stay CD5 and then others further down to be CD4. It provides more transition than doing nothing. So what I'm really asking you tonight is please don't do nothing. It's going to be so easy to say this should go to the master plan and do nothing, but please do not leave our neighborhood waiting a decade. We think this offers a lot of density housing that can still come in and address the affordability crisis of Portsmouth. We're aware that we really, really need that. And I think this plan accomplishes a lot of the goals the city council has set out of how can we still introduce density while respecting residents. So I think by voting for the zoning tonight, you are taking another step towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening. Elizabeth Bratter, property owner 159 McDonough Street. I've been working with the zoning for years. I wrote letters first, and then I came to meetings. That's why most of you know me. Elizabeth Bratter is known to show up, and you see me around town, and most people actually think I live here, but I don't. Anyway, I'm here to talk to you about three simple things. The zoning that's been presented is, as Kate said, it's not what we wanted at all. It's not even close, but it has room to work. There are three parts to this zoning request, in case you needed a little analysis in zoning. The first part is the overlay districts. The second part is the actual zoning itself, and the third part is the height. Most seem to agree that the overlay districts would be best if they located in the way they can be used, and that is what is proposed. Those overlay districts were created to make something happen that's positive. And the way they've been moved is to have that happen. Even the developer at 138 63, lot 138 63 at the Heinemann, realized that the overlays really don't work for him, that he did not have enough room to put in a large sidewalk, much less anything else. The other thing that is happening is the change from CD5 to CD4. It's not the greatest. The uses are, oh, very questionable, but we can work on that in the master plan. But it is a real win for lot 125 16. They are going to be able to use their original footprint if they want to. And it looks a lot like special dispensation, but hey, they got it. The final part of the zoning is height. CD4, I mean, lot number 125 16, the Ferguson lot, is 18 to 20 feet now tall. All of Bridge Street, and I mean every single building on Bridge Street and that end of the neighborhood is height, is two to three stories, 40 feet. That's the maximum height on Bridge Street. You can go anywhere in Bridge Street. It's two to three stories. So they're really getting lucky that being left at 50 feet. What does 50 feet mean if you live next door within 20 feet of? What does 50 feet mean if you live next door within 20 feet of that? What that 50 feet means is that 12516 at 50 feet will be 150% increase in height. That's what's being asked for, and that's what the neighborhood is willing to swallow up. You need to remember that the Ferguson Building goes as far back as Tanner and Autumn Street. It doesn't just stop at the front. This is a huge building, it goes all the way back to Tanner and Autumn. The other thing that's a misconception sometimes is height, and we can talk about that another time, but the biggest misconception with height is it's going to bring affordable housing. But the truth is, is if you go up high, you have to put in an elevator. If you've ever unloaded anybody in the third or fourth floor, by the time you're done unloading all their furniture and helping them bring all their stuff up, the first question that comes to mind is where is the elevator? And if you want to sell buildings that have two, three, four, five stories, you better offer something for those fourth and fifth stories and the third story as well. And usually, those are more expensive because they have to put more amenities in them to be able to sell them. So the 50 feet is really nice for them. It won't be very nice for the neighbors. Do I agree with everything in this? Absolutely not. And I could probably spend hours explaining to you that this is not really transition. Bridge Street is set up like a transition phone. It's CD4 all the way, except for at Islington Street where it's CD4L2. Its height maximum is two to three stories, 40 feet. But this is what was offered. The movement out of the zones actually makes their property more usable and more allocatable to be able to make a real profit on what they have. Understanding zoning is probably the most difficult thing you can do in this city. There are many people who don't even have a clue. I spend a lot of time sending emails to poor Peter Stith, who has to answer the 10,000 questions I have. But all in all, this is a good proposal. There's room to be done in the master plan, which hopefully can fix some of the uses issues and some of the height issues. But all in all, I think this is a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any other speakers? Do you have one on Zoom?
We have two on Zoom, yep.
Hi, my name is John Gray, representing the Ferguson Building, 125 Lot 16. Leave our property alone. This is, we are not the ones to be compromised between all the buildings around us. We shouldn't be the one piece that has to give somebody a look. Everybody in that area moved in to CD5 commercial property. Everybody moved in. We've always been there, we haven't changed, we don't want change. Just because someone doesn't want the look, then don't move there. We're just trying to run a business, we're trying to do the best for our families. That's all we're looking to do. Don't change anything. Don't split our, it gets confusing every time we get up here. We still have no idea what we're talking about because we're splitting our property into half of this, half of that. It makes no sense. Why are we doing this? And before you guys vote, I would like all of you to really think about that. What benefit is going out here? There was nothing I've read that six years ago, something passed. And we owe somebody something. When was that ever passed? Basically, just please, leave it alone, let us do our stuff. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Your Honor, first we have Matthew Sullivan on Zoom.
Hi all, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you for your time. So, this is my first time talking about the zoning. I'm not as educated as a lot of the speakers here. My name's Matt, I'm currently an engineering project manager at Lonza, and I live on Hanover Street. Just looking at the pictures from the slideshow earlier, I live on MAP 138. I have a few points surrounding the recent construction of the condo development, Lot 138-62, that I'll be focusing on. What rezoning means to me, how does it impact the neighborhood? And I'll follow up on what it would make me feel right as a current resident, based on kind of that construction project. And I'm going to pose some rhetorical questions for the council to consider. As an engineering project manager, I view feel uniquely qualified to come and discuss these topics based on what I've seen. And I thank everyone for their time. So what does the rezoning mean to me? The rezoning area between Hill Street and Boundary Place allows for further commercialization and buyouts of the affordable residential housing, which I currently occupy. How does it impact the neighborhood based on recent construction projects in the area, specifically the Lot 138-62 or the new condo structure adjacent from the Heinemann Building? The impact of the current future residents is obstructive, careless, and harmful to the neighborhood. I asked my significant other to compile pictures and videos she's taken from the last year and a half of that project adjacent to the Heinemann Building. And these can be provided to the council if I'm given an appropriate point of contact to send those over to. I'm also willing to meet in person for a 30-minute conversation to discuss the following points. Kind of in those, you'll see that the construction managers and the builders and the owners of these properties, they don't adhere to OSHA standards. You know, they can't properly do the job safely. And it would be pretty easy for me to give a call to OSHA and shut that down for a couple weeks, a couple months, which I refrain from doing so to avoid targeting. You know, in that evidence, we've kind of observed workers work without harnesses at elevated heights of six to 10 feet or plus or more in building of the foundation and the upper levels of the structure. There's noise pollution during off-hours such as 6:00 to 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. There's dropping of large and heavy waste from heights of 25 to 30 feet or more without proper hoist or waste collection systems. There is no removal of large construction equipment during weather events for multiple days or weeks in the winter, causing plowing delays, damage to cars and property, or Boeing and iceberms in the street, specifically Hill Street. There's unsecured barriers to the construction zones, which could be a risk to small children or people walking through the neighborhood, allowing unrestricted access to the active construction zones. They cause pollution on the streets, which residents then have to clean up by hand. The onus should be on the construction project managers and the contractors, not the residents. They have caused mechanical issues in our current residential buildings, negatively impacting the quality of life. I myself lost heat and hot water in our apartment over the last fall and winter because of the dust accumulation from the construction site. This was a direct quote from our maintenance staff of the Hill Hanover Group. They caused damage to the cars and our condos and apartments, such as building siding flying off during windy days. We are not provided any appropriate contacts from the project managers or foremen to submit proper claims for compensation. The owners and construction PMs demonstrated shady business practices, having current residents sign liability waivers to obtain parking passes that handle the residential parking that has been removed from Hill Hanover Street as a result of this project. They do not provide proper work notice of ongoing activities. Residents would generally be given less than 24 hours to vacate the area without providing any additional temporary parking. Just adding to that, contractors do not finish proposed work on schedule once, you know, these hours were supposedly be finished, and they would go on for either days or weeks without notification. And then following up on that to the council, I would pose the following rhetorical questions and provide some insight on what would make me feel whole as a resident if the council decides to move forward with rezoning of the area, which I am assuming implies that our buildings will force us to be relocated. You know, one, if we approve new construction and commercial buildings in this area, do we believe that the appropriate accommodations for the current resident parking possessions and quality of life will be made by the new owners and builders? Two, based on what I detailed with the current completed projects, is there a level of confidence that the builders and construction managers can maintain project schedule, project safety, and show a level of consciousness and respect to the community while these projects are ongoing? And three, is there any data that suggests these potential new lots and building developments have real demand to justify building them? I'll wrap it up there. I had a little bit more I wanted to say about, you know, the compensation. I think some of the residents on the Hill Hanover Streets should be given if, well, one, from the completed projects, since it seems like there was some shady dealings in the background that does not allow us to submit claims. And two, if we are going to move forward with any sort of new project that is on these streets, I think that the residents that should be relocated should be compensated justly. I appreciate everyone's time, and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much, Matt.
One more on Zoom, Your Honor, Robin Hustlidge.
Good evening, this is Robin Hustlidge at 27 Rock Street. Good evening, Mayor and City Councillors and City Manager. I'm speaking tonight regarding the rezoning of the Islington Creek neighborhood between Rock Street and Bridge Street. I support the zoning changes which help to create a transition from the most intense zoning to the least intense zoning, as occurs in this portion of the Islington Creek neighborhood. This includes the removal of the downtown overlay district and the north end incentive overlay district, which both encroach into our Islington Creek neighborhood and never should have been there in the first place. Changing two lots from CD5 to CD4 has minimal impact as there is no difference in the uses currently, which allow hotels with more than 500 rooms, large conference centers, and restaurants of up to 500 people, and other uses which are incompatible with small residential neighborhoods such as ours. I support these changes as they are heading in the right direction. However, I don't feel they go far enough to preserve our neighborhood. Hopefully, through the upcoming master plan work to take place over the next few years, the uses of CD4 can be tweaked to be more neighborhood-friendly. Your support during the master plan process for changes like this to support neighborhoods would be greatly appreciated. The allowed heights of buildings permitted by street is another important way to influence intensity of development. The previously proposed reduction in building heights on Bridge Street and Hill Streets from 50 feet, which grow to nearly 60 feet with the allowed mansared roof style to get that extra floor of living space, down to 40 feet would have been an improvement, but still wouldn't go far enough. And accepting the current 50-foot heights along Hill Street and Bridge Street does not provide the needed transition and is out of character for our neighborhood. This is not protecting our neighborhood, a promise all of you made when running for office. The result will still be a difference of 20 feet or more between new developments along Bridge and Hill Streets and their neighboring historic buildings, which are mostly one and a half to two stories and one or two, three-story buildings. Please reconsider the maximum of 40-foot height, two to three stories for Bridge and Hill Streets, as part of this much-needed rezoning of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. Any other speakers? Any other speakers in the audience? Seeing none, closing the public hearing. Any other additional council questions and deliberations? The Councillor, oh, we'll put the motion on the floor.
Yep, I'd make a motion to move to pass second reading and schedule the third and final reading at September 24th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Second.
Any comments? Councillor Denham?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was actually up here in 2019 when this concept was discussed, and I was surprised to learn after I was voted out that the overlay district did not move forward in 2020. I do not see a need to wait for the master planning process to go through and include this. And I also like the idea that residential will be allowed and commercial will not be required in some of the portions, as that was a mistake that was made years ago on the council that was on when we were requiring commercial downtown in some areas.
Councillor Denham? Councillor Cook?
I just have a question around MAP 125 Lot 17 and Lot 16. It seems to me those are the two lots that are divided in half by the change in character district zoning. And I want to know if there was any consideration to keeping both of those lots within, like fully within the existing character district zoning.
Tell me again, what lot numbers are you looking at?
It's 12517 and 12516. It's the Ferguson building and then the new...
So you're talking about the downtown overlay district that goes through? So that's...
Not the downtown overlay, the character where there's a shift, yes. There that occurs.
So what is your question?
Were they, did we consider, did we consider keeping instead of splitting the lots in half?
So you're talking about the downtown overlay?
Yes, I am. Keeping, instead of splitting them in half, did we consider just including those lots in the existing?
We, I originally did think about that, but if you really think about what is the downtown, and if we're truly describing the downtown, it's Bridge Street is really the outside of downtown. And that is about the distance of what we require commercial all the way on the rest of Bridge Street. So that was the rationale behind it. And actually, as I was driving down Islington Street going home the other day, I was reminded when I looked at the red street signs that are all through our downtown, Bridge Street is the last street that has them. So beyond Bridge Street, none of that's really considered downtown. So it made sense to try to follow the line of where it goes already. And that was what we were trying to do, so that the commercial is only required along the bridge to the corner of here.
Oh, Councillor Buck?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I just have another question. I mean, I'm very familiar with the Gray family, they've been here longer than Blalox have. But I want to ask some of the questions that they've kind of proposed. If the DOD going right through the building, so they're required to do commercial in the front, but could they still do commercial for the whole lot?
Yep.
Because they're still in the downtown district, right?
No, just because they're in the CD5.
Right, right, right.
CD5 allows you...
Glad we're keeping it CD5. Yeah, I just, I want to be careful that, you know, splitting that isn't devaluing their property in any sort of way.
In my personal opinion, I don't feel it does. I feel it gives them more options because they actually can do residential on the backside of that building where they couldn't if it's in the downtown overlay district. The entire first floor would be required to be commercial. And that's what we're trying to take away.
Yeah, yeah. So now, I just want to clarify, now they would be able to do what they would have before these changes, and now they have more options.
In my opinion, yes. I don't know if Peter wants to counteract me on that one, but in my opinion, yes.
Maybe yes, Peter.
You can tell me I'm wrong, Peter, I can take it, I'm a big girl.
No, that's, that was, currently, if in the downtown overlay, you have to have commercial on the ground floor. And so this would require that to be in the frontage. I think it's about 50 to 60 feet where that line would now is proposed. And so from there to Bridge Street, you would have to have commercial on the ground floor. Behind that, you could have residential on the ground floor.
Or commercial.
Or commercial. And then the portion in the back would have to provide parking for all uses where the portion in the downtown overlay, non-residential uses would not have a parking requirement. And then you get a credit of four spaces.
Is it changing their height that they're allowed to go to at all?
No, the height, the height stays the same. With the removal of the incentive overlay, that does take away the allowance for an extra story. But with the trade-off, you'd have to provide workforce housing and community space. But no, the height stays the same.
Any other comments? Councillor Tabor?
Thank you, Peter.
So...
Oh, you have a question for Peter?
Yeah, so...
Not thank you yet, Peter.
This pullback of the downtown overlay district affecting the Ferguson Building, is anything lost in terms of their options? The only thing that's lost is if they wanted to take advantage of the overlay district to go up a story for which they would have to provide workforce housing, right?
And community space. And that's in regards to the incentive overlay. The pullback of the downtown overlay, really the downtown overlay just gives you relief for parking, but you have to have commercial on the ground floor. And then some, that's the main thing with the downtown overlay.
Right, right, okay, so I was incorrect with the incentive district. Okay, so I was incorrect with the incentive district. The overlay district just affects parking. Okay.
Maybe thank you, Peter, now?
Yep.
I'm good with you. I'd just like to remind everyone that I don't think this stops the conversation about all the other changes that we're looking at, so as we go through the master plan, I think we can continue to have this conversation and should, especially around the uses of our core downtown and, and maybe where we put intensive uses and how close to neighborhoods they are. And I think we also need to think long and hard about, and we've actually recommended this through our housing committee, that we actually look at parking and how parking is handled in our core. So, you know, whether it should be in zoning or whether or not that should be in site plan regulations. So I think that there are other changes coming as well that are going to reform and really change how we look at this as a whole across our downtown. We have a lot to talk about.
Councilor Marrow? Any other questions? Councilor Cook, is that a hand? Is that any thought of a hand? All right.
Your Honor, I just, I think I want to reassure Matthew Sullivan, who called in, that this does not increase density, it decreases density, is my understanding in this space. But specifically, I think the thing that's really confusing about some of these changes is we have existing projects, and, and in most of this space, it is already developed. So we're changing zoning that's really not going to make much impact anytime in the near future, and I think that's, that can be, it's kind of confusing, because the earliest impact this will have is if some of these sites are redeveloped, and considering that they're all being currently developed, at least a majority of them are being currently developed, these changes won't have much impact for 25, 30, maybe 50 years. So I think that that's, I think that's the challenge here, is that the reason we're parsing all these individual lots is we're looking at what isn't developed and how does it impact those who aren't developed and how is that fair? And so that's, that's the thing I'm struggling with here, is there are only a few spaces here that aren't already developed, and what's the most fair thing to the neighborhood? And are those really adjacent, immediately adjacent? I feel like the spaces that are already developed are the ones that are immediately adjacent to the housing in the neighborhood. So we're talking about lots that are somewhat removed and somewhat are guarded by bigger buildings that have already been, have already been approved to be in place. So that's what's confusing, I think, to me right now.
Yes, certainly. Councilor Marrow?
I'd just like us to keep in mind that in actuality, the building that's under construction right now is required because it's in the downtown overlay to have commercial on the first floor, and I believe, I think something I had heard that there was a lot of, you know, amenities for the residents upstairs because they really were having a hard time filling those commercial spaces. So that might actually create more housing by taking away the downtown overlay district on that. They might be able to actually pivot some of that first-floor use, so I think that would actually be a bonus in some respects.
Peter, got a question for you. Sorry. Thank you, it's not over yet. So on, just speaking of the other development in the area, so on the, the buildings that were just finished on the other side of Foundry Place, did any of them take advantage of the north end incentive overlay district? And was it, I know we've changed that recently to require community space and affordable housing, was that taken advantage of when it was just community space?
For ADI Foundry, yes, they did. They, they got height, and so they had, so they got, they provided community space before it was changed to provide both workforce housing.
Yeah, okay.
The hotel did not.
So, okay, thank you, Peter. So I, I think, you know, in terms of the, I'm happy with the changes that we made to this at the last council meeting, and I, you know, to, to both Elizabeth, Robin, and Kate, who said that this was far from perfect, but better than it was, it certainly is, is both of those. Some comments on the north end or the overlay districts. Specifically, I expect these to change in a matter of year, by the time the master plan is adopted. And so I say that to, to members of the community, being like, well, it's kind of like a, it's kind of like a meaningless change right now to even pull these back, because they are gonna, they are gonna change pretty dramatically in the next two years regardless of what we do. The reason why I think it is important to change these, and I thank Councilor Denton for pointing it out, and I, I have to correct Kate to say that she was wrong, that we were on the council, or I was on the council, so was Tabor, when the ball was dropped on this in 2019. So none of it came, it came back, it was supposed to, this thing called COVID happened, and three different planning directors. Now, what would have probably changed at that time is the north end overlay district or the downtown overlay district as a response to this. What we've done here is changed some of the things like CD4 or the Heinemann Building to align with what they currently have, so that's what they're currently building, and CD4 confirms that. We didn't change the Ferguson building, both in use or in height, and regardless of whether or not it's split from a downtown overlay district or, and I would say, there's some arguments to say that we shouldn't have first-floor commercial outside of where we already have it, but that will be up to the master plan to, to fully understand. And, and I didn't want to see the height changed specifically because that would have created a enormous design challenge, in my view, for that property, to try to figure out where their heights ended on what part of the property. And so that's not changing, and I know that's really confusing to follow along, because we have talked about this for eight council meetings, and we've had multiple different proposals at each one of them. This is actually not even the one we started with, it's a second one. It's, it's the third one? So, so I know that this is really confusing, but what I, but I do, I, I find it to be important, because I would say that if you talk to, I would say, just about anybody in Portsmouth, the view is that we have a lot of development going on all of the time, and there is a feeling that, you know, it's a, the fix is in all of the time with, with every project. And what I try to share with folks that act like, why can this project happen? Why is this going on? It's mostly because they're following the rules that exist, the rules that we set up 10 years ago at the master plan. I think it's really important that we have a well-thought-out master plan process over the next two years, year and a half, and that for people to feel as though when we can make small changes, we will make those small changes to improve the lived experience of the communities, because without that, I think we're going to see very, a different type of change come down Portsmouth, one that's going to have negative impacts far outlasting what we, what we envision. And so I am going to be supporting these. I'm happy that folks have spoken out against these changes on both sides. That means that we're probably on a reasonable path here and that we can move forward with this to start a position where the overlay districts especially are going to change dramatically over the next three to five years. Councilor Marrow?
I just would like, as you talk about the master plan and getting input, to remind everyone that our first open house is September 15 at the Levinson Room at six, five, 5:30? 5:30 PM. So I hope everyone shows up.
In the Levinson Room, in case you don't, go there, it's the library.
Library. Sorry.
There, all right. Any other comments? Hopefully not as long as me. I'm not.
Can I ask for a roll call vote?
Certainly. Roll call vote, please go.
Okay. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Tabor?
Yes.
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Council Blalock?
No.
Council Bagley is recusing.
Abstaining.
Uh, Council Marrow?
Yes.
Council Lombardi?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, seven to one.
All right. Next on the agenda is third and final reading of ordinances, I believe, right? What time is it? It's nine. We'll take a five-minute recess until nine o'clock. We are now taking up a third and final reading of ordinances. Third and final reading of ordinance, Chapter One, Administrative Code, Article One, Administrative Code, Ordinance Amendments, Section 1.102 Administrative Organizations, Section 1.103 Organizational Chart, Section 1.105 General Powers and Duties of the Department Administrator, Section 1.106 Specific Duties, Functions, and Responsibilities of Departments, Section 1.107 Authority of the City Manager. Before we have a motion on this, and these are both tied together, we will suspend the rules and welcome anyone that would like to speak on this for additional time if I get a motion in a second.
Your Honor, I motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'd first open it up to members of the Commissions if they would like to speak again on this in an unobstructed amount of time. None seeing rising at this point?
Your Honor, would it be appropriate to start with City Attorney Moore?
Certainly.
Great, thanks.
So you have in your packet memorandum I put together in regards to the Chapter One Ordinance Amendments that was dated July 29th of this year that goes through the history of, you know, how we came to the proposed amendments in the Governance Committee for Chapter One. That's really the motivation for all of this. There's been lots of questions about that. The motivation, as we've outlined, I outlined in the memorandum, comes from, first and foremost, in 2000, there were charter amendments adopted for both the IT department and the HR department, the Human Resources Department. So that went to, went to the ballot and were adopted by vote of the citizens to amend the charter to have the Human Resources Department to perform functions for all city departments, including the charter department, and also a charter amendment for the Administrative Code to provide for a single municipal department to direct the acquisition, maintenance, and coordination of the information management technology for all elements of city department, city government rather, including the charter departments. Those charter amendments were never really pursued until the city put together its own IT department and bolstered that in the last few years with a chief information officer who is trained especially to ensure cybersecurity and prevent sort of cyber attacks on the city's infrastructure. So the purposes behind the changes that are particular concern here that we've heard a lot of talk about for the IT department is to ensure that the IT department and the CIO has the authority to actually establish these standards for cybersecurity and compliance. That wasn't needed in 2000. The world has changed significantly. Obviously, the digital world has changed and our information technology needs have changed and they change, need to be enhanced on a regular basis, more and more every day. So the legal authority is laid out in the memo. All of this comes from the prior charter amendments. What's before you tonight are not charter amendments. They are amendments to your ordinance, to your administrative code, to comply with your prior charter amendments. So with that, I would also say that there is no desire for the IT department or the Human Resources Department to invade the, the inner workings of the school department or the police department or the fire department, but rather to complement and enhance their operations. And that's the intention behind the amendments and the language that was used. There was a long process in which all of the departments had the opportunity to participate and provide their input to the Governance Committee. We had multiple public meetings with the Governance Committee and invited the charter departments to give their input at the time. And right up until the last city council meeting, they were offered the opportunity to provide some alternative language if this particular language is of concern to them and they've chosen not to provide any alternative language. They've chosen simply to object to the entire amendments. So that is the background that we have leading up to tonight. The council's free to always consider some alternate language, but no alternate language has been proposed.
If I may, Your Honor, looking to see if Regulatory Council Woodland or CIO Babcock want to add anything that would complement or expand upon what Susan offered.
If I may, Mayor?
Certainly.
Great. So I think the city attorney said it well in terms of emphasizing that part of the effort here really is to bring ourselves in accord with the charter amendments that were voted on by the public back in 2000. One of the other pieces that we also kind of talked a lot about in Governance Committee is the fact that the city is moving forward with new software, a new financial and HR software platform. And so we had a lot of conversation about that and needing to make sure that there's good coordination amongst all of the departments, including the charter departments. And so that is part of the other sort of piece that we're looking at as we go forward. As we also kind of flagged in Governance, and again, I flagged more recently and can continue to report that our efforts as we deploy new software for procurement, we've been working with the school department. They're seeing some better pricing with some of the recent bids that have gone out. And part of that is they are using the software, they are working with legal, they're working with Public Works, and we're getting some better pricing and some better products, I think, because of that. And really, that's what we're trying to do. It's not about usurping. It's, as was well explained, we're looking for a good coordination to take full advantage of our collective talents. And, you know, as I've said before, having worked in the legal department for over 20 years with every department, reviewing contracts and helping departments work through disputes, when you have two professionals on both sides being respectful of your roles and the legal department, for example, relies on the expertise of those other departments to know what do you need? What are the special requirements for your work? And understanding that through the process of, well, allow, let us give you our input on the legal aspects of what you're trying to achieve or how to achieve it. That has been happening all the time. We'd like to see more of that in the IT and HR field, and I think we can. And it is common practice, and the city attorney can back me up, when you are looking at an ordinance, particularly when it comes to governance, this type of how we work together, you're not looking for conflict. You read it in such a way that you are respectful of your roles and the process and what you're trying to achieve as the end result, which is, you know, from my perspective, I'm kind of a fiscal conservative, I want to see good value. And if you have two professionals sitting down with that same taxpayer interest to achieve the best outcome for the delivery of the service, to get what you want, then that's a win. And really, that's what these charter amendments are about, from my perspective anyways. And I just want to emphasize that it came up a little bit with the city attorney when she was reviewing this. We did have the fire chief in Governance. He shared with the Governance Committee about how he has been working with IT and HR, and he finds the process to be fair and responsive and has no objections to this language, because that's the world he has lived in those last couple of years since we've had an IT department and since the HR department has been, you know, robust and staffed in a way to deliver the kind of services that they need. And I think there are opportunities there for both police and school, but it's not about usurping, it's about working better together, so.
Thank you, Suzanne. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors, for the opportunity to speak. I've been involved with the Governance Committee going over the specific language for IT over several months with a lot of input from different groups, and the charter department specifically. There were revisions to the language, and I appreciate the school board, they let me speak at their last meeting as they were addressing this issue. And there's no intention for the city IT department to be involved in the daily operation of the charter departments. But when we talk about, there was a specific concern about the language operational efficiency, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to talk about what operational efficiency means in the IT department. So we are really looking to address resource optimization, aligning our security policies and incident response across the entire city, sharing of specialized tools, and leveraging our volume purchasing power when it comes to software, and developing expertise in areas like cybersecurity so that each department isn't trying to maintain expensive resources in very specialized areas. The focus is on protecting the city's investment in technology and managing risk. Technology has become intertwined with all aspects of our work, and this proliferation of technology has made a profitable enterprise for organized criminal gangs to attempt to extort organizations for money through ransomware. And that's a huge concern. We hear about it all the time. And our goal is to protect all four operational IT teams at the city across city IT, SCADA in the water, and sewer department, school, and police. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Did you notice the hand from Chair Coyle? Would you like to speak?
I'd like to. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to go off, but.
Okay, certainly.
I'll be as brief as possible. One, I did appear in front of the Governance Committee. I did propose alternate language. So the city attorney is incorrect in stating that no alternate language was proposed, and that bothers me. Two, Attorney Woodman really made our point. They're already seeing savings in working with the school department. She gave two examples where things are happening already without these ordinance changes that are exactly what we want to have happen, that departments are cooperating with each other. That has always been the way it's worked, and there's been no evidence that we need these changes in order to have that continue to work. Therein lies the point, why are we fixing a problem that doesn't exist? And Attorney Woodman gave two examples of collaboration working out, and so I can't emphasize that enough.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair Coyle?
Sure, thank you. Just briefly.
Just wait until the microphone.
Just briefly, I mean, I think one of the points that were emphasized in the, in further, in some of these ordinances, were sort of this idea of safety and security and cybersecurity. Well, with respect to the police department, they've always had heightened standards of security. And regardless of what is, you know, the, the IT department is going to, for the city is going to establish, well, the police department has a heightened standard of expectations because of SIGIS compliance as well as other, I mean, the utmost of confidential records and the need to preserve those. Obviously, you know, there's discussion about, you know, being fiscally conservative and a preservation of resources, and I fully support those concepts. But it is completely unrealistic to think that there will not need, we won't need a I, someone, an IT specialist specific to the police department in order to effectuate the specific needs of a police department with this CAT RMS system, with needing to be on 24/7. This is so vastly different, the needs of a police department are so vastly different than the rest of the city, that it, it, there isn't going to be this great fiscal savings. And I appreciate being fiscally conservative, and I think about that all the time, because we're all tasked with considering, you know, our, our residents, our community's tax dollars. But this is not the place, and this is not going to be effective in making sure that the police can effectively do their job, and most importantly, which is specifically tied to security of our, our community. So, thanks.
Thank you, Chair Coyle. Esther, would you like to say something?
Esther Kennedy, 41, Pickering Ave. Just recently, I had the privilege of sitting in a cybersecurity meeting for our school district and other school districts. And for half a day, we learned that that's a whole heavy-duty world right now, especially in the last couple of months. And there's been some districts that have gotten hit hard. You talked to Newfoundland, the superintendent was writing out paper checks. Talked to Manchester, they went down. Nashua went down for days, and teachers and everyone lost everything. I guess my concern is, what we were told by this New Hampshire specialist that's hired by our State Department, is that schools become the number-one target. And they basically, because of the amount of emails we receive from outside sources, the amount of emails that come in from companies and contractors and, and everything, and the fact that we have things like Primex that will pay the bill. So my fear is, in listening tonight and hearing everyone talk, is why, and just hearing our technology person, why are we putting these all together? Why aren't we separate? The police department, we know, has received over the years several grants and are running many things for the state, not just even local. Why would we take it and bring it all together and sabotage different departments because some poor soul in a school got a contract that was sabotaged from an outside provider? It could wreck our, or sabotage our whole city. Why aren't we keeping things separate? I am perplexed by that, folks. I would encourage you all to take advantage of the state and what they're offering about cybersecurity. After spending a day, we brought them to our school district, and I can tell you, our whole school district is in a very different frame of mind, given what we learned in, in an hour and a half in our opening meeting. So I would encourage you to really think about that. The other thing I really am perplexed is, where do the city management think they can handle under the RSA's human services for the school? There's a whole RSA set of RSA's of how we have to handle that. The hiring process, the three-year evals so that people can get their three-year certificates, the fact that for the first five years, you're doing all these evaluations and you're checking in on people and you're keeping files on people at the SAU. Where is your role in that? I don't see it in the RSA's. And lastly, I think the city attorney did make some mistakes in what she said. I did hear Buzz make some suggestions, our commissioner. I did hear other people make some suggestions at those meetings, and they kind of went unheard. And that's what's sad. And I also know that the superintendent has made quite a few suggestions in an email that you actually accepted as a council, and yet they were not presented tonight. So I, before you go down this road, I would encourage you to do some more investigation as a council. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Brian, all right?
I'll be brief. Just want to, just speak on a few comments. Again, I know the city attorney said that we made no recommendations on language. We, we did. I know that was probably a mistake, but we did send over some previous language a couple of weeks ago. Byron had drafted that, and I'm pretty sure you guys got that language and looked it over. We did discuss quite a bit on our last school board meeting of what proposed language changes we would make, or we, or we were going to sign up with the, as a joint, jointly oppose the, the language in general. It was a kind of a split vote, I think it was four, five, four. And, and we were talking about taking out the operational efficiency. If that was the piece that would be taken out, that's what we were probably most concerned with. Otherwise, the language was fine. But we ultimately, I'm speaking as, if I'm speaking for the board, you know, that's what we ended up voting on, was the joint, the joint thing that we put out. Now, we did give other language before. Feels like you guys did hear some of that. There were some adjustments to the language, just don't feel like it was far enough. So I just wanted to make sure the council heard that we did propose language. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Brian, just, sorry, just a quick clarification. The school board proposed language to the most recent language that we put forth, because we did hear feedback from the school board specifically.
Yep.
We made significant changes. We made significant changes to limit much of that and have not yet heard, at least formally, from the school board of any additional language changes that you would request, only that you oppose the entire, the language in its entirety.
That is correct. So, just for the timeline purposes, I think you're, two meetings ago, we did propose language changes. I think you guys did make changes, not what we asked, but you did make changes. I think it softened it. I think as a board, it was a split vote to some degree, but I think the majority had said that, you know, we wanted to make the joint statement with the police commission. So, I wanted to give you a little color behind all the, the thinking and the process there.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one other comment, point of order. There is a typographical error in the proposed ordinance, as Petra pointed out. So, it should be RSA 21P:39 in the very last section of, of that. So, we can always, if you want to amend that prior to taking any vote tonight.
Certainly. Paige?
Is there, with all due respect, is there any reason with proposed amendments being made to this big, large problem that we've got involving three different departments at least? Is there any reason why the council couldn't table this? I realize it's late in the game, but is there any reason why you couldn't table third and final reading to have a joint meeting with the fellow elected commissioners? They're elected officials by the city, just like you are. And could there not be a meeting of minds to clear up any misinformation? Any thoughts of why are we doing this? Why are we not? Is it beneficial? Is it not? And maybe you would also have a clearer understanding of their wants and needs in the wording and your wants and needs in the wording, rather than, I realize government worked all through it, but perhaps not with the very commissioners that are our elected officials. They carry just as much weight with their voice for their particular departments as you do as sitting city councillors. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paige. Any other speakers? Oh, not closing the public hearing, because that technically was not one. But we will offer questions of the, the council and open to the discussion of the council. Councilor Lombardi.
I have a question for the IT director. Is the plan to merge the networks of the?
No, we would never suggest to combine the networks of the PD or the school department with the city. We're talking more about high-level planning and, you know, resource management and cybersecurity, not physically or logically connecting the networks.
So, the networks are remaining completely separate?
Correct.
In those, in those parts of the?
Yes.
And there's no, no transfer of information between those networks at all? Maybe?
There's, there are some instances, like the finance system, that are shared amongst the different departments. And so, to say that there's no connections between the different departments would be inaccurate, but it's very minimal and controlled.
I guess I'm talking about the actual networks, the, the computer networks.
Yes, each, the charter departments and the city IT department maintain separate networks.
Thank you, councillor. So, oh, there's Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I feel that the, as a member of governance, as we sat in, you know, I feel as if the concerns that I'm hearing very heavily and heard in the meeting from the police department felt more focused around personnel and the worry of cutting personnel or trying to bring in a IT person from the city government side to manage the police side. I felt that it was very clear in those meetings from the CIO that that is not the intention of, of any of this update. Moving on to the school side, we received an email from school board member Maddow earlier, and I, and I, with his permission, am going to quote something that he wrote that I, I very much agree with. And I think it is important to point out that opposite of the police, the school board was a five-four vote. In this quote, he says, "I think the most recent version of the proposed language does a good job of balancing the independent, independence of the charter departments with the need and mandate for centralized authority over the operations of IT systems. It reflects the spirit of the charter while also respecting the statutory operational responsibilities of the charter departments." I agree with that wholeheartedly, and that is what I see that this moving forward represented. I do think it is important for full record to also discuss the fact that operational efficiency has seemed to be a highlighted pinpoint, and I think it was in watching the school board meeting and also reading through school board member Byron Maddow's email. And I do agree, I do think, you know, understanding that that does cast a little bit of broader net. I would be open to discussion or an amendment to potentially strike that, or add in wordage that says operational efficiency within IT systems, if that feels a little bit more comfortable to some of the school board members. Again, for me, this is not, as has been worded by some members of the public, a power grab, nor is it a, nor is it a problem, I'm sorry, a solution in search of a problem. I think it is a rolling idea and notion that started in 2000 with the charter review, understanding that IT needs and HR needs are going to be needing to further be adapted back then. And we are at the point in the, in the standard of our technology and kind of the operational running of municipalities that we are there. I also think, as it was brought up earlier, with human resources, to me, it is very clearly defined that we are clarifying language that is already done. I will read from the new potential verbiage. "The Human Resource and Negotiation Department is responsible for, for functions that support the hiring, training, development, and rotation of skilled and effective workforce. These functions include recruitment, employee relations, records, benefit administration, and compliance with labor laws and regulations." It goes on to say, "Additionally, the department represents the city manager, school board, fire commission, and police, and police commission in negotiating administrative or collective bargaining agreements involving the city of Portsmouth." That is true. That is not changing. That is clarifying verbiage in here, but our, our HR department does all of those things hand-in-hand with our charter departments. So, I do not see, and I, and I think it's worth mentoring that, because HR was brought up today, that that is already happening, that our HR department works hand-in-hand with our collective bargaining. And so, for that, I, I feel like I'm supporting these changes, again, knowing that these date back 25 years ago, and now we are finally rolling into effect, because we were at the point that the city has been able to stand up as an IT department. I do not see that, and I trust in our CIO when, when he has said in several of these meetings with the administrators and the IT administrator from the police department, that that is a role that is not being lost, that there is no snatch-and-grab of, in transition of power here. We are looking at, in, in the start of the CIO program and that internal IT program, looking at trying to look at a 10,000-foot view. And so, I think while maintaining the independence of the, of the commissions and of the charters, we can have a more uniformed operation within that.
Assistant Mayor, are you making a motion to add the language of operational efficiency of IT systems?
I would look at adding the, yes, I would look to make an amendment, if I can get a second, narrowing the conversation to operational efficiency of IT systems.
Second.
Point of order, though. Should we do the original motion first?
Right. There's been no motion.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been no motion.
Oh, okay. So, and again, so guys, so hold on. Here's where like this gets tricky, because we got two things that we're, we're trying to, that are collectively the same. The first one is talking about like the chapters and titles. The second is where the actual amendment happens. So, if we, we got to pass this first, third, and final reading of ordinance, but it seems as though we will also have an amendment potential and, I guess, a legal inquiry. Would this change the, the intent of the ordinance and require an additional reading?
I don't believe so, because what I'm hearing for the amendment is really just qualifying that language, operational efficiency, which is already qualified at the beginning of the sentence by IT standards. So, the language was IT systems.
IT systems, yes.
So, I think that's essentially the same. But it, if it gives people more assurances that operational efficiency is only related to those systems.
Right.
Good. Okay. But that's not, so we'll have, we're having a conversation on the, the first, on both of them, kind of, because we have to take into, we have to take into account. But I would actually, Kelly, can we just take out of order and go and take up the E before we come back and do D? Because D depends on us passing E and not the other way around.
Yeah, I don't see a reason why you couldn't. You could suspend the rules to take up item E.
Suspend the rules. So, E is, E is where this language is that we're talking about?
That's the SEAL's deeds in elections.
No.
Oh, did we change this? Oh, never mind. All right. Sorry. Totally wrong. All right, yeah.
I was a little confused when you said it.
Yeah, let's take a.
Yeah, they're not interrelated.
Yeah. Okay. So, let's, yeah, let's take the, let's take this one up. Sorry. My mistake. Well, first we'll have a motion on the floor.
Yeah. So, I would move to pass third and final reading of the ordinance as presented. Second.
And is there an amendment now to this?
Yes.
First, you need to suspend the rules.
Yes.
Oh, I'll take, wait a motion to suspend the rules to offer an amendment at third reading.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Your Honor, I would make a motion to change the wording to operational efficiency in IT systems, and that is under IG.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Now for.
Your Honor, should we also have a motion to fix the typo?
Yes.
RSA P dash?
21P.
Yes.
It's in the very last section for the city manager's authority. If you go down to the bottom, paragraph B, under the city manager.
1.107, section B.
Second motion.
So, we need to change RSA 29 to RSA 21.
So, I motion to change RSA 29-P:39 to RSA 21-P:39 under section B.
Second. Oh, in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Petra.
On the main motion.
Now, we're on the main motion. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really appreciate hearing all the comment tonight, comments we've, we've received tonight. We spent six months working on this in the Governance Committee, and we took public comment for six months. We worked very closely with all the departments that came. In fact, in our very first meeting, we heard from the, the police department, the fire department, and the school department. So, we started there with our discussion at governance, and then we proceeded to take language suggestions and amendments for six months. We changed the language repeatedly to try to reflect the interests of those that had come to our meetings and were expressing concerns and tried to meet them where they were, as best we could. But we also had to stay in line with the changes that our voters told us we had to adopt when they made charter changes that originated in the year 2000. So, we were constantly working, the Governance Committee with the legal department to make sure the changes were reflective of those charter changes that our residents voted on in the city of Portsmouth. We have to first and foremost be responsive to the residents. They voted on those charter changes, and we wanted to make sure that the administrative ordinance reflected what was in the charter. So, one of the challenges with updating ordinances like this that haven't been changed in many, many years is that the ordinances aren't in line with practice anymore. They're not in line with what we're doing, and in some cases, not in line with, with changes that were adopted many years ago. So, what the Governance Committee's goal was always in this process is to bring the language up to current standards of practice, what we're doing in the city, and make sure that it was in line with what our charter actually says. And so, hopefully, that's what we have brought forward with lots of input and lots of changes in this process. The goal is never to take on any authority from, away from anyone. It was to reflect the wishes of our residents. And hopefully, that's what we have done here.
Counselor Cook? Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a couple of comments. I know some of these items are controversial, but I, I do want to thank the Governance Committee for the work they've did. And some of the things we haven't talked about tonight, which I think are important to mention, you know, the, the planning's been changed to the Planning and Sustainability Department. Public Works has been given a little bit more capabilities to do the things they do to keep our citizen, city functioning. Recreation Department now, it spells out youth and seniors where it didn't before, you know, to be included. And then the Welfare Department, it kind of gives them the okay for work they're already doing, but with outside services. So, there, there are some changes that I, I understand are controversial, but there's a lot of really good changes in here that I haven't heard anything negative about, and I just wanted to highlight those, because I think they might be getting lost a little bit in the discussion. As, as to the changes with the IT in particular, you know, it's, somebody mentioned tonight, you know, in 1895, we, we created a police commission. Well, that was about 50 years before we were a city manager system, and the mayors ran for one-year terms, and, and, you know, they couldn't even imagine something like computer I, IT that we have today. So, some of the changes we're doing are, are just things that we need to do because things have evolved so much. So, there are challenges that we face today with, with our water systems, with our school systems. I mean, in order for Public Works to fix a pothole, there's a, a ticket has to be created on click-and-fix or something like that. You know, there, there almost nothing in the city can happen without some, touching IT in some way. And I think these changes are reflective of that. And municipalities are a target. We have money, and then we're, we're a target because it's the health and safety of our residents. And we need somebody at the top who can make calls in challenging circumstances that the buck stops with when it comes to IT attacks, cybersecurity attacks. When, when things go wrong in a hurry, we need somebody that can be at the top of that pyramid to make those decisions. And I think these changes are just kind of clarifying that role. I don't think they're fundamentally changing the way the ID department works in any of our charter departments, or really throughout the city. I think what they're doing with these changes is just making sure that we have a very robust network, and that if something was ever to go wrong, we have a very good emergency management plan in place. And I think these are the type of changes that, you know, after 20, 25 years, I guess it's been, you know, it, it, they're long overdue. And I just, I want to thank the Governance Committee, because they put a ton of work into this, and I think they've done an excellent job.
Counselor Bagley? Counselor Tabor?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, the, the council is the governing body, and as such, we have the ultimate responsibility. And we, we work for the voters. What struck me in the 2000 charter change was the voters said, "We want a single IT and HR department for the city," and, and, and including the charter departments. And that was in black and white. and, and, and including the charter departments. And that was in black and white, in the actual ordinance that was voted on by the residents of the city. So I feel like refusing to do that is refusing to do what the voters said. Second, the cyber attacks. I had breakfast recently with somebody in that field. I don't know if anybody know, the state of Nevada has an attack. They've been unable to function. They've had no computers going for two or three days. And this person I was sitting with said, you know, there's more money in ransomware attacks than all of the Mexican drug cartels. This is a big business. It's going to keep growing and continuing as a threat. And we have to adopt and make progress. And I think in light of, when you look at that situation, this change is not only logical but necessary. And, and I also, I think we all know, I know from my years in various organizations, there are times that lines of authority have to change to adapt to the world around us and make progress, and this is one of them. So I think it's normal. It's healthy. It's what the times demand. And lastly, you know, if we proceed with a, a single IT department, Ryan depends on your people for his success. He, and you may find, for example, Brian, instead of Chromebooks not being refreshed when they need to, you may find a full-blown IT department has a, has a regular refresh program for all its computers and a budget that's brought up to us at the city level. So there are enhancements that this can give us, and I think we have to see those.
Thank you, Counsel Tabor. Seeing the, appreciate the dialogue and for all of the commissioners staying here and the school board members, and I think I saw Dickie still back there representing the Fire Commission. It starts with the, my support of this starts with the fact that this was supported by the residents in 2000, the charter amendment. And Byron's email, you know, pointed out, we didn't have all of the benefit of, of joining in for the, the discussion with the school board. But what's not in question is that the voters wanted to see a singular organization for IT and HR overseeing every department. And I appreciate that there wasn't the ability of the school board couldn't agree on language. Byron suggested some language, and I'm happy that we were able to, to further adopt that language to define the scope of what operational efficiency is. Doesn't mean, doesn't mean staff at all. It means being able to deliver our systems efficiently as possible. Because in the charter, and in the, and in the, what we're changing in the ordinance still calls out the unique and specialized nature of, of this. So there are going to be specialized and unique things that the school department needs, that the fire department needs, that the police department needs. And the question that was brought up this evening of, of, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You know, we've been operating with MOUs for this entire time. Let's just keep operating with MOUs and, you know, Bob's your uncle. Like, no, no big deal. I think that misses out on one specific thing is ignoring the threat levels that continue to rise with IT specifically. You know, the, the, the potential for a data breach, the potential for, you know, network instability. Those things are, are very real, and they are growing. And the idea that, that we don't have to grow to meet that, that risk and that demand is that my direct response to the question of, why is this broken? As Counsel Bagley pointed out, there needs to be the ability to have somebody, you know, in charge when things go bad. And if things go bad in this case, we need to have somebody making a decision where it comes to the full depth of all of the information because they've been working on this for, for some time. That's what the CIO's office allows us to do and to be able to respond in the case when there's actually a threat. Now, it's done a, you know, departments have done a great job. I don't have any data on, you know, the, the threats that are experienced by the, the police or, or school, but I imagine it's similar to the city's department in that we're constantly facing threats. What this allows us to do is not to hire three other people that are going to be at good at keeping the outside threat actors from getting into our systems. What it's not going to do is replace anybody that's working within those systems to continue to deliver what's supposed to be delivered into all of those, those departments where the charter, where the commissions and the school board represent. And that's the biggest change here. And so I, I hope that, you know, this conversation has been a, a positive one, and I hope that the changes that we have continued to make to this language continue to give the assurances that we see a threat, a threat to the city of Portsmouth that we have to act on in order to deliver the security that the city of Portsmouth deserves, both from a data breach standpoint or things that we don't even know about, you know, ransomware attacks, et cetera. And in doing so, we allow and will continue to have the departments doing exactly what you are elected to do, and that is run those departments with the added ability of understanding that the city of Portsmouth, the residents have voted that we consolidate these because they saw this threat coming 25 years ago, and we're finally getting around to do it because it turns out changing anything in a city is, is quite difficult. So I appreciate the conversation thus far, and I think we're ready for a roll call vote. On the amended, the amended third reading.
Yes, mayor. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
No.
No. Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Moreau?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Mayor McCacklin?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Next, we have third and final reading of ordinance amending chapter two, Seals, Seal Deeds and Elections, Article Two, Deeds, Section 2.201, execution to be amended by deleting this section in its entirety.
Mayor, I move to pass the third and final reading of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, city manager's item which require action.
Thank you, your honor. I have two items tonight. The first is a request to establish polling hours for the upcoming municipal election, which is taking place on Tuesday, November 4th. The city clerk is requesting hours from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Your honor, I move to establish polling hours on November 4th, 2025, municipal elections from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Kelly, for all the work that you and the office are going to do.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The second of two items is a request to schedule three public hearings at our next council meeting on September 24th, 2025, to consider whether to place three distinct ballot questions on the November 4th, 2025 municipal ballot regarding number one, allowing social districts, number two, prohibiting keno, and number three, prohibiting games of chance. So as folks know, the legislature passed new enabling legislation that gives municipalities the local option to vote on these three topics. And it's important to note that it would be opt-in to social districts and opting out of keno and games of chance. So as we're following the legislation, it's our understanding that we need to hold three separate public hearings, and that those could take place at the next council meeting. And our senior assistant city attorney, Jane Farini, has provided a very informative and helpful memo in your packet. And we've also provided the three suggested motions to keep them separate. And the thing I'd like to stress tonight is that the state has passed this legislation, but they haven't promulgated any regs. So I want to make it clear to folks that what you're deciding tonight is, A, whether to put this on the ballot, and then if it were to pass on the ballot, should we get that far, then we, we get into the conversation of what that means for Portsmouth. But it is not clear what that means. We don't have guidance that is specific yet from the state. So that the question tonight is very limited to, do you want to hold public hearings to vote on these three items?
Your honor, I would move to schedule a public hearing on September 24th, 2025, to consider whether to place the following question, allowing social districts as a ballot question on the November 4th, 2025 municipal ballot. Quote, shall we allow the operation of social districts within the city of Portsmouth? End quote.
Second for discussion.
Is there any discussion? Oh, Counsel Bagley.
Your honor, I'll, I'll be supporting all three, not necessarily because I support them, but we're, we're giving the public a chance to come out and talk about these. And then ultimately, I'll be supporting them most likely because then we give the public a chance to vote on them.
Counsel Lombardi, and then Counsel Cook.
I, I guess my concern is that the vagueness of, of the ordinance, of the ordinances, not ordinances, the laws from the state and how it's implemented is, it's just a complete unknown. And it's, I would think it would be hard for anyone to vote for or against something that has so many unknowns.
Thank you, Counsel Lombardi. Counsel Cook, and then Counsel Blaylock.
Thank you, your honor. On this first question, I agree with Counsel Lombardi that there are a lot of unknowns here. But I was going to specifically ask if we could ask someone from the EDC to come to the hearing to, to speak with us.
What I should have offered is that the EDC, and I'll let the assistant mayor take it if she wants.
The EDC does have a working group that was, that was discussing this. The problem is, much as, as the city manager has said and Counselor Lombardi mentioned, the EDC is not sure that it will have a prepared opinion on this because we do not know how the state plans to regulate this. And therefore, the EDC is not sure that it will be able to form a complete opinion with input from the business community because we simply just do not know. So that was kind of the...
I can add to the thought process. In the same way that the council delegated authority in some ways to the EDC to come up with guidelines for outdoor dining, this, this would follow that same process. So regardless of what the state comes up with for guidance, it will be the council that decides whether, what, what takes place with the boundaries of a district, what's allowed. So just adding that.
Go on to Counsel Blaylock, then Counsel Tabor.
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, I just want to be clear that people understand we're voting to give the people a chance to talk about putting it on the ballot, which is very confusing. I know some people read the article and thought we were voting to approve social districting, which is not the case. It is your decision. It is a citizen's decision. But I certainly won't get in the way of letting them have that decision.
And this is just to have the discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Counsel Tabor?
Yeah, I just, I would hope for the, the 24th, we would have any information we can get from police. Would, would social districts require more police manpower? DPW? When people leave a social district, they're not allowed to take a drink away? Is there a litter problem that occurs with these? And, and third, from legal, if the voters adopt this and we find out that it doesn't work that well, how do we rescind it? My initial impression is the law allows social districts to be created, the vote is taken in the ballot, and there's no provision to rescind it.
We revise it.
Was there, Counsel, Counsel Bagley?
I, I think Counsel Tabor brings up a good point. And it would be good to have, I mean, we have the ability to say, provide outdoor dining with, within the regulations of the, the state. Like, you're not allowed to have dogs on the outdoor dining if they have to travel through the restaurant. And I believe a social district is going to be something similar. But we, we, or a future council probably would also have the ability, is my understanding, to say, we're just not going to have the, we've voted to approve a social district, but we haven't permitted a social district. So that, I just want, if we can get that clarification.
We'll get that clarification. Yep.
I think, I was looking at Attorney Farini back there saying yes.
Yeah.
She might be able to answer your question now.
Attorney Farini, would you answer any of the questions that are probably already in your memo, but we weren't able to?
Hold on to the thoughts. Good evening, everyone. It's an excellent question. As, as you all are commenting, this is not, the, the actual legislation is not a model of clarity. However, it does reference, a municipality may rescind its action in a manner described in paragraph one, which is the ballot process. So it would have to go back as a rescission, as a referendum. It's not like a zoning ordinance. This is, you know, how we have different districts and different zones. And I was thinking of it that way, but if you look at the statute where it lives in, it's liquor licensing. So it's a, it's a different animal. But I can, I can provide more information at the next council meeting.
Thanks, Jane.
Counsel Lombardi?
The question I have is, does the state provide any funding for the police and policing? And, yeah, no, I know the answer.
That's a rhetorical question.
That's a big cut, no. We're all like, no.
Assistant Mayor.
I think it's, to me, I think it's very important that, and as it's been said up here, that this is a live and breathing project. I think from, you know, the initial things that have come out from the Liquor Commission do differ, I think, that from the, the legislation, the, the writers of the legislation, what they initially viewed is different than how the Liquor Commission is, is, is viewing it in their initial statement. So for me, I will be supporting this because I think anytime that we can have a ballot initiative and put things out into the community, this does not mean this will be a free-for-all within, within the community. I think it's, it's been very clear from what the Liquor Commission has, has said so far that this would be cordoned areas. This would be very, so far, they've, they've floated some pretty specific guidelines. And we will have the, the ability to look at what other communities are doing. You know, Concord is already bringing this up, Nashua, Manchester, other communities that kind of have thrown kind of block party style events. And so we do have, you know, there's no timeline after this goes to ballot of kind of when we need to, when, you know, how this moves forward. Guidance from the EDC, maybe a blue ribbon committee, conversations with all of the Public Safety Commission. So I think there will be a lot of work post-election and with clarification from the, from the state within that guidance. So I think we'll have a lot of time to be able to clarify what this looks like in our community. But I also think, going on to that, to the next item, it's, I, yeah, go ahead.
Any other conversations on this? Again, to support this is to support it for a public hearing, where we will then decide if it goes on the ballot of November 4th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Your honor, I move to schedule a public hearing on September 24th, 2025, to consider whether to place the following question, prohibiting keno, as a ballot question on the November 4th, 2025 municipal ballot. Shall we prohibit the operation of keno games within the city of Portsmouth?
Second.
And if I can speak to this for a second, I just want to clarify, this is the question that we have to put on the ballot. I'm not passing judgment here today on whether or not we should have keno, but that's the question we would have to put on the ballot. So we would, the motion is to have a hearing on that, on the 24th.
Counsel Dutton, then Counsel Blaylock.
Thank you, your honor. I have a legal inquiry. If we could change the wording from, shall we prohibit, to shall we not allow, just so all three are in line, allow, not allow, not allow, versus?
I think it's specific to the statute, but I'll defer to Attorney Farini, who's been working on this.
Some of us get confused when we see prohibit, and the word starts with pro, which makes you think it's for.
Four.
Yeah, it's a double negative.
And I think the statute says similar language. I'm not sure if it states.
Yeah, the language that you have is what's suggested in the statute, but it does say in language similar to. So I think that your suggestion is similar because the double negatives are tough.
Motion to amend this to read, shall we not allow the operation of chemo games within the city of Portsmouth?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Blaylock?
I want to thank Counsel Dutton for... I want to thank Counselor Denton for making that change because my question was going to be to clarify the current language, or the language that was presented, because I could see that being very confusing. So I wanted to clarify that, but I think this is more clear.
And thank you, Counselor Blaylock. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Jane keeps running back. Is there, can Attorney Farini, could you give some feedback on the legislation that will occur or that is allowed for Keno now without this?
My stepson. So the difference between what you had in 2017 for Keno, which was an opt-in, so your decision to, was whether or not you would put the question to allow Keno. The new, the bill changed that, so you have to affirmatively opt-out, which means you have to, so, which means if you did absolutely nothing, Keno would be allowed in the city of Portsmouth. If you decide next meeting that you're not going to put the question on the ballot, Keno will be allowed. So the distinction between what you're used to for Keno and the change is that you now have to affirmatively opt-out through a referendum, which is the ballot question, which we've discussed. Any more questions?
That was it for me.
I'm going to have questions on the next question.
Okay, I'll hang out.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's really important for everyone to remember that we've had two votes so far and our residents have voted down having Keno in the community. So I think it's important to give them another opportunity to vote once again. And who knows how they'll vote this time?
It's getting closer every time.
Any other questions on this specific one? Again, to have the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Your Honor, I move to schedule a public hearing on September 24, 2025. Do you consider whether to place the following question on prohibiting games of chance as a ballot question on the November 4, 2025 municipal ballot? Shall we prohibit the operations of games of chance within the city of Portsmouth?
Second.
I was wondering if Attorney Farini could just give us a brief description of what that means exactly by games of chance.
Sure. I did not know myself, so I called the Gaming Commission and had a question, and I said, are you prohibiting casinos? And the answer was, no, no, we're not prohibiting casinos, but we are prohibit, but this vote would prohibit games of chance, which is a term of art, for particular types of games that are only permitted in casinos, like blackjack or, you know, the types of special games of chance that are licensed through the commission. So it is not technically prohibiting casinos, but in reality, the effect of taking this vote and prohibiting these games of chance would prohibit a casino in the city, de facto.
Thank you.
A lot of questions on this. Counselor Denton.
Your Honor, I want to make the same motion to amend this. So instead of having it read, shall we prohibit the operation of games of chance within the city of Portsmouth, it would read, shall we not allow the operation of games of chance within the city of Portsmouth?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, Counselor Tabor.
So what happens if the council did nothing on this?
I think the only prohibition against casinos would be through your zoning.
But all of the types of gambling at casinos would be permitted?
This is a detailed answer. It was, the, my understanding of the evolution of casinos is that early on, there were small mom and pop type of casinos that had these types of games of chance. In talking to the commission, the requirements for casinos have changed over many years, and it's now more difficult and far more sophisticated to get casino licenses. So the issue of these types of games of chances is that they are only permitted in certain casinos, certain types of licensed places where one can play games of chance. So if you did nothing, it's not like the opt-out Keno bill because it's not an automatic permission to have casinos and these games of chance in your town. You could and would still be allowed to prohibit casinos through zoning, if that exists in our current zoning ordinance. So someone could apply and request to have a casino sighted here, and if you hadn't taken this vote and if your zoning didn't restrict it in any way, then the state could license that request.
And are we allowed, in what we put in front of the voters, to explain what games of chance are, that these are?
We can do it at the two public hearings.
Poker, roulette, you know.
Yes, I can get a more robust description of what those are. And that's exactly right, blackjack, roulette, those types of games. And I can get that for the public hearing, you know, in two weeks, two weeks from tonight. But we can't put it on the ballot question. I think we're pretty restricted, and Kelly can chime in, she's dealt with ballot questions more than I, but my understanding is that it's a simple question, a referendum question is a very simple question. I can reach out to the Secretary of State because I think they deal with issues relative to ballots and referendums to see if an explanation, you know, a more robust definition could be put. But my initial understanding is that a referendum question, the referendum questions are narrowly defined in the bill. But I'll be happy to reach out and provide that information and...
And this is just a comment, you know, the gambling lobby is the most relentless lobby in this state. And if they can find a way to expand gambling, they will. When I see these opt-outs and negative permissions, at the same time, there's a study committee looking at expanding charity gaming, taking away table limits, free alcohol, things like that. You know, it all looks to me like a pattern.
And just as a reminder to the council, so you, if you vote this evening on this particular motion to have a public hearing on before you decide to put the question on the ballot, all of these referendum questions require a public hearing, I think it's between 15 and 30 days before the actual municipal vote. So they would then be, if you went forward and put any of these ballot questions on the ballot by vote in two weeks, there would be a required public hearing on the actual referendum question on October 6, I believe, because we have deadlines for not only so many days before the election, but we also have deadlines to print our ballots. So that particular hearing, so there'd be another, there'd be another public hearing on the issue if you move this forward.
Counselor Blaylock?
So yeah, my question, I guess, was similar to Tabor's about the games of chance. Are they trying to include all normal casino games and then like all the games Chevy Chase played at the end of Vegas Vacation there, like pick a hand and pick a number? But I would like that to be clarified, just when we do have the, just so people know. And, you know, the kindergarten's not getting in trouble for which hand am I holding, you know?
No, ice out is still safe, you know, just so you know. The votes, the betting on ice outs on the lakes.
If I read your memo correctly, they did carve out for games done for charitable purposes, such as, I know the Elks holds like meat raffles and they have games that they play so that people can... So there is a carve out for like that one-off kind of things that already exist and happen today.
Yes, exactly right.
Counselor Cook.
Can we make sure that at the hearing we clarify for residents too that this does not prohibit their neighborhood poker game that they're playing at their neighbor's house?
Yes. Private poker games can still continue. Yep, I'll, there are various different statutory definitions of all these types of what's permitted and what's not, so I can do a little synopsis on that so that it's clear for the public hearing two weeks from tonight.
Thank you, Jane. Any other questions, comments? I think this one's going to be tougher than all of them, mostly because of the, it's going to be tough to, nobody, I don't think many people have a definition of games of chance that is not, you know, and that games of chance like a lottery are completely carved out. But that's for the following discussion, as long as we vote for this for the next meeting. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next up, the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? For email correspondence under presentations and written communications.
Move to accept and place on file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Onto the council agenda, appointments to be considered. We'll have the reappointment of Robert Capone to the Broadband Internet Commission, the reappointment of Katinka De Rutier to the Board of Library Trustees, and the appointment of Yolanda Fennin to the Board of Library Trustees. Next, and those are to be considered, their applications are in the packet. Please reach out to them or me with any questions. Acceptance of resignation, Charles Sullivan from the Sustainability Committee.
Your Honor, I move to accept with regret the resignation of Chaz Sullivan from the Sustainability Committee and to send a letter of thanks and appreciation for her service to the city.
Second.
Any discussion? Thanks, Chaz, for all you've done. Appreciate the time served and for letting me ride that way-too-fast motorbike one time. All in favor? Aye. And we have Alyssa Murphy from the Public Art Review Committee.
Your Honor, I move to accept with regret the resignation of Alyssa Murphy from the Public Art Review Committee and to send a letter of thanks and appreciation for her service to the city.
Second.
Your Honor, I just wanted to say that Alyssa has been a wonderful member of the Public Art Review Committee, and I wanted to thank her for all the work that she's done. The committee does quite a bit of work, and Alyssa has been an integral part of all of that, and we will definitely miss her.
Indeed. All in favor? Aye. Next up is Counselor Cook, Counselor Bagley, and Counselor Moreau.
Your Honor, I move to direct staff to develop a detailed implementation plan for a resident parking access program, establishing a $1 per hour fee for non-resident vehicles in neighborhoods that surround downtown that are currently un-metered with enforcement by license plate. Staff shall return to council with proposed framework, cost estimates, and recommendations for pilot neighborhoods with specific consideration of how the program can also support higher-density affordable housing developments without parking requirements.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Bagley?
Yeah, so, you know, we did a pretty long parking study of the whole city, and one of the recommendations that came out of that, the parking utilization group, was that we have what's commonly referred to as like a neighborhood parking program. So for instance, say, in parts of the South End or parts of the neighborhoods near the Foundry Garage or on Parrot Avenue, we get complaints often from residents that they can't find parking because tourists are parking there. What this framework would do is, it wouldn't just be residents of those neighborhoods, it would be any resident in the city that registered their car at City Hall and signed up for the parking program would get free parking in those new zones. But people that were not residents of the city would now have to pay a fee of, suggested fee of $1 per hour to park in those areas. And this is, you know, one of the other areas that we see a lot of complaints recently is it's very hard for our residents to find library parking or parking to play pickleball because they're competing with residents of other towns. And I think we all know our taxes went up pretty severely this year because of what the state did with the revaluation. And I think, you know, this is a perk our residents deserve. They should, they pay for these facilities with their tax dollars, so they should have a first bite at the apple and getting a chance to park there.
Thanks, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I have a few questions and comments about this. This says, non-resident vehicles in neighborhoods, right? We're not talking about like park, parking lots at parks? Are we talking about neighborhoods? Because it says neighborhoods, right? That surround downtown?
On street parking.
Yeah, on street parking this is referring to, correct?
It would be any surface parking, so it could be a lot.
So I have, I will have a question for Peter Rice eventually. I know there's, we've done these neighborhood parking, you know, studies before. We've done it in the South End, we've done it in Counselor Moreau's neighborhood. I remember they didn't go well. Whenever you draw a line in the sand, you know, and you say you have to park, you have to pay for parking there and you don't there, it's going to, it's going to cause some, it's going to ruffle some feathers. I don't know, how would you pay for the parking? Like if my grandfather wanted to go park in front of my parents' house, how would he pay for it?
With the app?
Well, he doesn't have a cell phone. So my grandfather can't go park in front of my parents' house anymore and he has to pay for it now? That's like requiring someone to have a smartphone to park in, like at their relatives' house. I don't think, I don't even know if legally we can do that, if we can require or penalize people that don't have a smartphone because we've set up a program where you have to have a smartphone to pay for it. That worries me.
There is a 1-800 number you can call as well.
Okay, so my grandfather's going to call 1-800 number to pay to park in front of...
They don't have a phone, how are they going to call 1-800?
Yeah, how's he going to call?
I mean, he has a car but no phone.
Yeah, so this just seems like a really half-baked idea. And it's not an idea that is new. We've looked at this idea before. I know some, we're not all from Portsmouth. But, yeah, like, what? But if I could just have Peter Rice, if he could just give us what happened when we did do these neighborhood parking programs before and how they went.
I think it would be appropriate to have that as part of the report back.
Okay. My biggest concern with this is, yeah, we've tried this before, it didn't work, so I don't want to spend more money and staff time just because, yeah, we're going to try it again. It just, the $1 with no meter, I don't know how you'd pay for it, you know? If you, whenever you draw a line, you know, in the neighborhood, you're going to create some separation and some not-cohesiveness, you know? So I'm always against drawing lines in the sand in the city of Portsmouth.
Counselor Blaylock? Counselor Denton, and then Counselor, Assistant Mayor.
I'll support this motion, but I do have similar concerns, so I'm looking forward to what's brought back. Because when this was brought forward, something similar years ago when I was on the council, questions always came up, hey, where are the lines going to be drawn? How many free passes does each household get? Which then raised a whole lot of more disputes. And for me, it's the people who work downtown, who park in these neighborhoods, who would be also negatively impacted by the $1 per hour fee versus tourists. So if there's some way to differentiate between downtown workers and just tourists, I don't know how we could do that. So I'm looking forward to any report back on pluses and minuses.
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I echo the same sentiment. I would have loved to see within this proposal from the three counselors, maybe a couple of options to have staff work with instead of just putting this on staff to then decide. Maybe options one through three of kind of where you're marking it out. I, you know, I personally understand or would think that, you know, if I'm a resident and I don't have to park, if I have a guest, much like people do in like in other communities, I would move onto the street, my guest would move into my driveway or removing them. I don't necessarily think that is so much of an issue. I do second the issue, the concern of Counselor Denton of... Um, I do second the issue, um, the concern of Counselor Denton of, of, um, you know, a lot of those people that park right on the perimeter, um, are downtown employees of all different makes and models. My concern too though, when, when I hear, when I read neighbor, resident parking access program and we talk about the neighborhoods, but then, um, it was also mentioned all surface levels. So are we talking about now Parrot Ave? Are we talking about the South Mill Playground? Are we talking about, um, lower City Hall Lot? I think that, I, I feel that that, this is very broad as we talk about neighborhoods and that concerns me. Um, I think if you talk about the, Parrot Ave is in a neighborhood, South Mill Hall is in, uh, South Mill is in a neighborhood, um, this, um, lower City Lot is in a neighborhood and they are often all used as overflow for residents and non-residents. And a lot of times we actually, um, sometimes push workers out further here instead of taking up some of the high-value downtown parking. So that is my concern. Um, again, very concerned that this, as it, as, as it's read and as I just heard Counselor Bagley, this includes surface lots, which include Parrot Ave and South Mill Playground, which I know that there is conversation in the future of utilizing South Mill with meters, I adamantly disagree, in, in potentially, um, metering a parrot, which I adamantly disagree with also, so. Just my concerns with that, I think that would be a healthy option to maybe, um, I would respectfully maybe ask the counselors to re-refine what their ask is and maybe give some options for staff before just throwing this on staff.
Counselor Cook.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, this request is really kind of a general framework request. Um, it doesn't ask for, um, it doesn't provide specifics because what it's asking is it's asking for the staff to, to develop a detailed implementation plan. Um, I don't think that any of us counselors want to assume that we know ideally exactly where, um, parking has to go or should go and in how that should be phased and a program like this, exactly how it should be adopted. But we received recommendations back that we should be looking at a program like this in our parking study. And I think it's critical then to say to the staff who do work on parking on a daily basis, you know, what, what should this look like? What does the implementation plan look like for a resident parking access program? And so that's what we're asking for. Um, and to come back to the council, tell us what the framework should be, tell us what cost estimates should be, what are the recommendation for pilot neighborhoods, what, whether or not we look at certain surface lots. Um, we're not going to prescribe that because we're not the experts on parking, our staff is, the staff that work on parking every day. And so that's what we're really asking for, is for them to come back and, and make those recommendations and give us that implementation plan for what that would look like and how, how it should be implemented.
Thanks, Counselor Cook, Counselor, uh, Blaylock, and then Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I, I know we've discussed a, you know, some sort of resident parking plan or a pass that they could get and so that they could have free parking at South Mill Playground, Community Campus, the Chris Rice Skateboard Park. Um, you know, as those become more and more popular, um, you know, noticing the skateboard park, for instance, is becoming a parking lot for the entire rail trail. Um, so it's very popular. Um, but again, you know, Portsmouth residents have paid for that whereas a non-Portsmouth resident really hasn't. Um, so I'd be more a parking program that's looking at those, um, surface area lots that could give maybe the workers and the residents, you know, free parking, but perhaps charge, uh, those that are coming out of town to just play pickleball or just use our recreational facilities, um, or the library, um, you know, that could be another one. But not, non-resident vehicles in neighborhoods that surround downtown. Those words I disagree with, they, that's already been done, we've already looked at that several times. Um, I don't want to waste money and time looking at it again.
So I would say that this, uh, proposal, as it, as it remains in front of us, is broad enough to, um, uh, to accomplish that. Um, and I would expect anything from, uh, the DPW to be inclusive of areas where it could start in areas that have higher demand and universally would have the support of the council. I think the library, pickleball courts, uh, you know, outside the, the middle school might be some of those areas to begin with. I do think that, um, you know, the, the trick as it's been, as some of the feedback has been given today is going to be the same feedback that we will find, uh, down the road when we start going into the neighborhoods. And that is specifically, how do I make it so this is a benefit and not a pain in the ass when I have somebody visiting me? And the pain in the ass could be so great that, uh, for somebody that's, um, that's visiting and they can't find parking right now and nobody can visit them, so they'll want this. But what we found is that starting with specific neighborhoods makes it this, this continued push out, so if we were going to go in the neighborhoods, I'd probably more likely to support something that was universal in Portsmouth rather than something that started in one specific neighborhood and crept out because we were just here from the next neighboring neighborhood. Um, Counselor Moreau for the first time, and then Counselor Bagley.
I think we have to be sensitive to the utilization study because it actually did do counts on the neighborhoods that were adjacent to downtown, and I think we just need to look at what all those numbers are and where it makes the most sense and go based off of the experts that have already given us this information.
Thanks, Counselor Moreau. Counselor Bagley.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and there is, um, the parking utilization study on the website, it's 161 pages by the Desmond Group, and I would imagine staff would talk to Desmond Group and Andy Hill, uh, who's a, a parking expert that knows a lot about parking in the city from his study over the last couple of years. And when we did do the pilot program that was part of PTS, we did get a lot of valuable data. We found out where a lot of the pain parts were, but we really weren't ready to move forward with something at that time. We didn't have a good way to, to differentiate all the things. And that's why, um, instead of say, saying neighborhood parking access program, it says resident, um, I'm a big believer that if you're a resident, you should be able to park anywhere in the city with the same rights as any other residents, it shouldn't be by neighborhood. Um, and it may be that the staff comes back and recommends nothing, it could be that the staff recommends we, we test it on one street or on one surface lot that's not currently metered. Um, this is really just a request to them who are, and we have a really, um, our parking department is, is recognized professionally as one of the best parking departments in the country. Um, they really know their stuff, so I think by them coming back to us with some recommendations, we're gonna get some really good feedback.
All right, first thing, gonna wait for a motion to go past 1:30.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Oh, it's three, there we go, six to three, all right.
Getting risky.
I'm gonna open coffee shops.
That's, that's all I had, Your Honor.
Uh, Counselor Tabor, then Counselor Lombardi, and then back to Counselor Blaylock.
Um, yeah, I always used to think, we all pay taxes for the streets, we all should be able to park anywhere on the streets, but, um, we did find, we had mixed results with the Islington Creek pilot. Some people who faced downtown workers taking up spaces on their street all day, every day, got immediate relief and they loved it. Um, others who were further out from the downtown found, like the mayor says, it was a real pain to go get, uh, passes for your visitors and your plumber and all of that. Um, you know, if you read the parking study, we're gonna be 500 spaces short in a couple, in four, five, six, seven years. And that's gonna mean intrusion into the neighborhoods. So, you know, I have reservations about this, but I'd vote for it because that reality's coming and if we want to manage the whole parking ecosystem, this is one of the options we have to look at. Um, and, uh, you know, I don't think you can look at some of the other surface lots unless you've got a strategy to take the pressure off the neighborhoods. Um, so, um, you know, some things we've learned to solve, uh, when we did Islington Creek, everybody liked having a place they could find on the street for once and they didn't have intrusion, but then we said, how are we gonna pay for it? And we proposed charging for the parking permit. Well, support for it went down to nothing. If you have a meter though, that charges a non-resident vehicle, that's how you fund the program. And it's simple. Um, and, um, in terms of, you know, Mr. Blaylock Senior, uh, or your grandfather, you know, it's based on your license plate. So all he has to do is sign up and his license plate is recognized as one that doesn't get charged.
Uh, Counselor Lombardi and then Counselor Blaylock.
Uh, the thing I'm concerned about is that we keep asking for these studies from Public Works and for parking. And, um, it's, I don't know, they're busy people, you know? We keep asking for, trying to solve, help them, we keep asking them to help us solve this problem, um, and every time it comes back, it's, it's not very feasible. So I'm, I'm just concerned about, again, asking them to do this in a different way, just yet another way to do it.
Counselor Blaylock, thank you, Counselor Lombardi.
Um, I agree with Counselor Lombardi, um, to Counselor Tabor's point, uh, my grandfather's handicapped, so you're gonna make him go to two different places before he can go, you know, to visit his daughter? Um, I don't see, you know, my other, um, issue is that I know enforcement is very expensive, um, you know, and if we're gonna force the entire town or a much bigger circle, um, I imagine, I just expect those costs to be part of the study, I guess, but I'm very concerned about. I'll be voting against this, obviously, I don't support this.
Counselor Moreau.
I'd just like to point out that anyone that's handicapped, has a handicap placard, can hang it and would not be charged.
So it's free parking for handicapped?
Yes, and the whole state of New Hampshire.
Uh, Counselor, uh...
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I live in one of those neighborhoods that's highly challenged when it comes to parking. Now, I personally don't experience this because I have two parking spots, so I'm very fortunate. Um, but the South End really does struggle, um, with parking availability and, um, specifically residents who live on Hancock and Gates. And I think that that's part of what was coming back in the parking study is that we do have some areas in the city that have parking challenges and that where residents are being squeezed out. And there's a lot of concern around, you know, losing availability at Parrot Avenue, um, losing, on Parrot Avenue, losing availability in the lot there. Um, it's, it's a constant pinch point as far as do residents have parking or do people from out of town have parking? That's why we, we get concerns when we have people parking overnight, uh, because they're taking up parking spaces, um, for, for residents who actually don't have parking, um, in front of their homes, and they wouldn't have parking because their homes have been there for over 200 years and were never, there was never envisioned that they would need parking, um, when those homes were built. So there are, there are definite challenges already with parking in the city. And as Counselor Tabor points out, um, as we start having, uh, a real deficit in parking, um, specifically around the downtown area, that is, that is gonna create even more challenge in the immediate neighborhoods and in surface-level city parking lots at the library, at the middle school, at Parrot Avenue, at South Mill Pond. Um, so it, it's better for us to at least get ahead of it and start to do some planning and ask our parking department to let us know what kind of planning we need to be doing and what kind of implementation we, plan we should have for a program, whether or not they recommend it and what the implementation plan would be.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Anything else that hasn't been said? Counselor Tabor.
Yeah, could we just clarify, I may have had this wrong, um, do you need an app to take advantage of this resident plan?
I, oh.
Counselor Bagley?
Um, the, there's a number of cities that require an app or to call a phone number, they no longer have parking meters or kiosks, and over the next, say, 10 to 20 years, I think that's gonna be widely accepted, but I would look to the city staff to come back and, and recommend what, you know, what areas maybe would require a kiosk or meters or would be app-only if, if that was to be on the table. But I think this is a, a very broad proposal that we're asking city staff to fine-tune to what would work best for our city with our infrastructure. So I guess that's a non-answer to your question.
Yeah, I'm thinking about Rich's grandfather, you know, and does he need a phone or not?
Well, if I can remember to put up his placard. May I? Yeah. If, if your license plate is registered in the city of Portsmouth, then that's all you need.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that, so, uh, there's a couple of questions and I'm, I'm certainly, uh, differential to the DPW's time. I think that one of the biggest things we have though is to figure out parking because it's tied to housing and, you know, nobody, I mean, lots of people probably don't like buildings, they don't like more people, but they all hate more cars, um, there, and so we're gonna have to figure out how to, uh, limit them. I do think that the easiest thing to do would be to start with some of the city lots that we currently, um, do not, uh, meter, um, to be able to, uh, to enforce that so it's easier for residents who have already paid for the library, uh, to be able to access the library, or the same with pickleball, that would solve a lot of nice notes that I get on, um, on that front, um, as I'm sure we all do. And so there's a, I think there's, you know, some things in here, um, we are gonna be limited in terms of when, you know, something's gonna come back and potentially compelling a future council on this, so, um, having this framework, uh, would be, uh, important, although it's likely, uh, going to be difficult to have, you know, this implemented before, uh, the end of the year. But, um, I think it's a good conversation to start with all of the caveats that have been raised, uh, today or, or this evening, soon to be tomorrow, um, on, uh, on, on this topic. So with that, um, we'll, we'll have the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Assistant Mayor. Uh, Lombardi.
And Rich.
Thank you.
Next up, approval of grants, donations, acceptance of grant from the New Hampshire Department of Justice for New Hampshire Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force in the amount of $1,300.
Your Honor, I move to approve and accept the New Hampshire Department of Justice grant in the amount of $1,300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City manager's informational items.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, the first is a report back on the status of comparing State Street to two-way traffic. We do have an item in this year's capital improvement plan, which we are gonna get started with. Fourth with, um, we're using the same consultant we used for the Market Square Master Plan, the Beta Group. They're working on developing a scope of work and budget that will not only look at evaluation of roadway configuration, but, um, will include lots of robust public input along with a presentation of the findings. We expect that to wrap up before the end of the calendar year this year. The second report back is the matter of the petition recently received from residents of Upper Islington Street. We've, um, we've had this conversation multiple times in my tenure, over the five and a half years, and long story short, the DPW staff planned to create a new capital improvement plan element sheet for the upcoming CIP to secure funding for design and construction of a new sidewalk. And, and folks in that area will notice that since, um, this conversation has been held in earnest, we've constructed two new street crossings, one at Barbary Lane at the beginning of the rail trail and one at the WBVX Road locations. These come with the, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, providing an extra level of safety. Um, but what we will do when we bring this forth as an element sheet will be to build to our city specs, which is called for in the city sidewalk policy, which would not be asphalt, which would be concrete.
Thank you, city manager, wouldn't want to stop doing work on Islington.
Ever.
Anything else under informational, under miscellaneous? With that, a weight of motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any Portsmouth?